All right, everyone, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. We've just finished item number two in camera. Move on to item number three. Any additions or deletions to the agenda circulated? We are going to need a motion to extend the meeting by one hour. So is someone prepared to do that? To extend the meeting by one hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried. All right, if there's no additions or deletions to the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda is in order. Moved by Councillor Patty Durkey. Do I have a seconder? Second by Councillor Nick Hilton. And I apologize, Councillor Hilton, I'm seeing you through two panes of glass, so there's a whole bunch of reflections, but I did see you this time. So a motion on the floor to approve the agenda circulated. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried unanimously. Moving on, if there's any declarations of conflict interest, please state that on the item that comes up and it will be noted by the recording secretary. Councillor Hurler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to let you know that I have an ongoing house issue, that I'm a house repair issue at my house, and so I do have my phone here, and I won't be checking it for anything other than possibly a phone call from the people who are doing their repair, and then I'll excuse myself.
Yep, we see you get up, and if you don't have time, that's certainly all right. If it's in the middle of the thing, it'll be noted. All right, item number six, presentations. 6.1, Deep Sky Observatory. I'm assuming you're Tim?
I am Tim.
All right, can I get you to hit your red button on your thing? Your microphone is live, and you have the floor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. My name is Tim Doucette. I'm the owner, operator of the Deep Sky Eye Observatory in Quinnen, and I'm also the Chair of the Starlight Development Committee. And today I have something to talk to you about which I think that will help to preserve our way of life here in Yarmouth. So I'll talk to you a little bit today about light pollution and where we are now with our starlight adventures, if you will. And we'll talk about what light pollution is, and we'll talk about dark sky friendly lighting, and why should you guys even care about this? Why should we even bother with it? And we'll talk about some next steps that you could all take to help us and help with the starlight initiative. So just to recap a little bit, in 2014, the starlight development of the Starlight Foundation honored our region here in southwest Nova as the first starlight tourist destination and reserve in North America. That comes with a series of responsibilities, and it's just been in recent years that we've actually been able to, you know, accomplish some of the goals of the Starlight, of the Starlight Foundation. They're backed by UNESCO, the International Astronomical Union, and the World Tourist Association. And these special designations that we've received, called Acadian Skies and McMac Lands, are very sort of a prestigious thing, as we're the only ones in North America to currently hold these titles. The responsibility of, or I should say, the responsibilities that this committee that we have, we've shown that the Starlight Foundation has a number of economic benefits when it comes to astrotourism, which was an experimental tourism product that was introduced at the time. The responsibilities of this committee also, of this organization, is to protect the dark skies of the world, which one of those dark skies is our region here in southwest Nova, and we risk losing it if we don't do something to help protect it. And essentially, it should be treated like any other natural resource, like the oceans and our forests. So in 2016, we built the Deep Sky Eye Observatory as a proof of concept, not just, for me, it was a passion, and we created astrotourism products. We partnered with National Geographic on some interesting projects that went very well. We opened up sky bubble tents as a new type of accommodations that's no one out east has seen before, and it's gone very well. Since that time, there's been other stargazing experiences that have taken place, and one of those, a few of those are the night walks in Clare. Of course, the Trout Point Lodge started with all of this as well. We have a Wedgeport Trail and Stargazing Trail and Platform, and we have a number of Airbnbs, actually, that have recently sort of popped up that helped this tourism initiative. Yarmouth and Acadian Shores has been a huge supporter of this initiative, and they've actually had a consulting company come in and determine what makes Yarmouth special. And they found the number one thing on the list was the dark skies. So they've helped promote this, this product, this industry that we're actually creating. So it's pretty exciting. In 2018, we were the recipient of an award as our designation, not as the, just the Deep Sky Eye Observatory, but as the whole of the designation, as the Education and Diffusion of the Astronomy Award and the first Starlight Awards Ceremony in Spain. So our Starlight Development Committee has a number of objectives, is to promote the starlight initiative, to grow astrotourism, to promote astronomy and educate about astronomy, to engage our leaders, and to attain other certifications for our areas, for example, from the International Dark Sky Association, the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada. I'm happy to announce, if you haven't heard already, that Argyle now has legislative laws in place as of 2020 that help protect our night skies from light pollution. And that applies to all zones, and it includes commercial properties and personal properties. We've even got a little pamphlet that we've created that, that is handed out to all new construction for the area. So if you're building a house or a cottage, that little pamphlet on the left shows, you know, our regulations as our bylaw for our land use. And they're currently in the process of creating a separate light pollution bylaw on its own. So that's an exciting piece as well. We've engaged Nova Scotia Power, and our committee will be helping them select the next generation of streetlights for Nova Scotia, dark sky friendly lighting, I should say, for Nova Scotia. And we've also engaged Efficiency Nova Scotia. We're working on a project with them as well to provide dark sky friendly lighting rebates coming next year for, for commercial properties and for residential properties in Nova Scotia. We've engaged our MLA as well, Colton LeBlanc, and we'll be working with him. One of the things we're looking at is to change the municipal, the municipal laws for Nova Scotia to include light as part of nuisance, to make it easier for municipalities to create bylaws for their, for their own municipalities. More recently, the town of Yarmouth has assigned staff to work on this problem and to help reduce the light pollution in the town of Yarmouth. Here's an example of what the town's done actually so far, which is kind of interesting. They removed the bright streetlight that was in the parking lot and turned it off so people could better see the night sky. Quite a difference if you haven't gone up there yet. Here's an example, and I throw this up because it shows what people can do. Flagstaff, you know, has 70,000 people in there, and the town of Yarmouth only has about, or the municipality of Yarmouth is only about 10,000 people. So it's taken them decades to reduce the light pollution to the point where they can actually see the night sky, but they've done it. We have a chance to do that without having to spend decades because we can stop it from happening before it starts. So what is light pollution? Well, light pollution essentially is just light that shines anywhere where it's not wanted or needed. Light that shines up in the night sky or anywhere else that's where it's just wasted energy if you're not using it. We use a place, a scale to determine how dark the sky is. We call it the Bortles Scale, and right now, our area is considered a one and a two in southwest Nova Scotia, aside from the more populated areas, of course. And about 60% of the people, 65% of people that have visited the observatory have never seen the Milky Way before in their life. About 80% of people actually live in light polluted skies. So what does dark sky friendly lighting mean? Well, it's very simple. Just one thing to clarify, when we talk about watts, we don't mean how bright a light is. We used to be able, watts is a measure of the energy used in a light. Now with the advent of LED lights, we actually have to use lumens, which is a different term, that represents the brightness. Shielding is probably one of the most important, is to have full cutoff shielding so that the lights are shining down. They're not shining at an angle. Though the color of the light is hugely important for our environment, the amber color lights or warm white lights are recommended, and they're what's called nonbioactive. Anything that's blue in the light spectrum will affect humans, plants, and animals in different ways. Timing is also really important. You want to have a light that's shining only when it's needed, and it also makes a great security feature, too. So people have a misconception, a couple of myths, and we've been teaching this for a very long time. More light does not equal better security. In fact, can, if you look at that picture on the screen, can you tell where the person is hiding? There's plenty of light there, should be able to see him, no problem. He's actually hiding behind the pole. So you want to try to avoid sharp shadows. Here's another example. So essentially, better light equals better security. And here's a couple of examples. Here's before a retrofit of lighting that's just kind of creating sharp shadows everywhere, and here's the lighting after. You can see a lot better where you want to see, on your, you know, where you're walking. Here's another example as well, guy in front of a fence where there's a bright light, and it's actually blinding, your eyes automatically will close, the pupils will close, and you won't see that person in the background. So what about existing lighting that we have now today? Well, there's a few things you can do to, to help with, with the light pollution aspect. And add a light shield, just add a shield over the light that directs that light downward. And you could add a filter as well, if you wanted to, to reduce that blue component of the light. It actually attracts a lot less mosquitoes, too. In the last five years, there's been some very great advancements with different types of lighting systems, and, you know, from the time that, when, you know, you guys had voted to change all of the lighting in Yarmouth, the options weren't that great. And now we're very happy to be able to say that there's a lot more options up there. So why should you care about all this? What's the big deal? I mean, it's just light, right? Light affects everything. Nocturnal life, creatures need darkness to survive. Everything from deer to frogs to bats, all those different animals require that darkness to survive. Our brains are wired to wake up to blue light. Blue light at night messes with our sleep patterns, makes us more susceptible to different types of cancers, the whole bit. There's all kinds of species that are in danger simply because we have too much light in our environment, even plants. Having a streetlight next to a plant or a tree reduces its life by about 20%. Migratory birds are affected, of course. This is an extreme example, but it shows that, for example, in New York, they have to turn off the lights of those, where the Twin Towers were, every, for a few hours to let the migratory birds keep going, otherwise they get caught in the light and perish. Our ecosystem, and this is something that is, I think, directly impacts our area here because we have so many lakes and rivers, algae growth. White light increases algae growth. This is an example of Rideau Ferry in Ontario, where one of the lakes there was destroyed because of lighting that was on the shoreline. Algae grows in the daytime, it grows 24 hours a day if the light's there. An example of Rideau Ferry in Ontario, oh, sorry, not Rideau Ferry, Toronto, astronomy, in 2003, the great blackout, 50 million people lost their power, and one night, somebody took a picture of the before and after, and people were calling 911, couldn't figure out what was in the sky, and it was the stars they were seeing for the first time in their The human connection. The stars have been a part of our way of life here, whether you know it or not, and, you know, we're all part of this, this universe, and it is, and we're all part of that stardust that we're made of. Technology, all that, anything to do with space and the space program and learning about what's up there has a huge, you know, the, the history of our planet, you know, and the medical advances we had have directly impacts from that, learning about space. So really, Yarmouth has an incredible opportunity right now. You know, by changing or adapting light pollution policies to protect our night skies, we're not really, we're going way beyond tourism, we're going beyond that. We're going to attract other people, other businesses, even such the likes of even NASA, maybe, to have an educational facility here to teach us, you know, to learn about astronomy. Astronomy is a gateway science that we're very referred to as, and that can encourage other, you know, types of science, like oceanography. So it has a huge educational impact. We're working on a project right now as well, and we're doing a pilot project in one of the schools in Maple Grove this fall to teach about astronomy and engage the children to, you know, embrace our culture because it's part of our heritage, and to learn So what do we do next? What's our next steps? Well, actually, step zero, which I hadn't listed there, is to assign people to work on this, on this problem now. You know, we now have Argyle that's on board, we now have, the town is on board as well. You guys, you folks that have been here for a long time, who were originally here in 2014, when we had the investment of money to put in towards our starlight certification, you know, that's one of those things, that was the first thing that the auditors were wondering, and they asked me after the meeting, because I spoke for them with about, about an hour afterward, and they said, are they going to be able to protect the night skies from the light pollution? And I said, I hope so. So, like I say, we're creating an industry now, and, and I think it's, and, you know, especially with tourism, education, it's a great opportunity. So creating laws is part of it, education is part of it, which is our committee, we're doing a lot of. When streetlights need to be replaced, you know, that way we can have a plan for when those streetlights need to be replaced, but that's further in the future. So here's just a couple of examples of good and bad lighting I'd like to show you. So here's an example, a friend of mine, actually, from New Brunswick, and he had a neighbor who had a streetlight pointing at his own house, at his, at his house, and it was distracting. So eventually, the neighbor actually had to change the lighting so it's shining on his property where he needs it. And my friend said, I actually did him a favor now, it's actually not shining in his bedroom window anymore. Here's an improperly installed light. It's a streetlight pointing horizontally instead of pointing down. Here's a garage where the lights were retrofitted, instead of blinding people when they come up, it's shining down instead. So I'd like to thank a special thank to the people and the companies that have already changed their lighting to dark sky friendly lighting. It's a huge step. There's lots of things coming down the pipe to encourage that. I can tell you, you know, we're working with Nova Scotia Tourism and on that project as well. It's a project that we started called Light It Right, kind of like Clean It Right. So you have a decision to make, and the decision is, do you decide essentially, you know, do you decide to grow like all the other municipalities around the world and kind of not really think about the problem too much? Because once it happens, it's a very big challenge to undo. Standing out as being a dark sky friendly community goes a long way to, you know, promote our area in great ways. And one last thing, you know, we're fortunate to have this resource, and one thing that's interesting, and COVID has really kind of taught us, is that people are coming here. A lot of people are coming here. They want to move here, they want to live here. But in order for us to preserve that way of life that we enjoy so much, you know, we have to make those changes. And, you know, we've had people move to our community in Quinnen who, first thing they've done when they come is they put a streetlight because they're, you know, afraid of the dark or, you know, and having a streetlight's not a bad thing, it just needs to be done correctly. So, so, you know, it's up to you guys, you guys have a great opportunity now to, you know, make changes that will help our, our community to, you know, to preserve everything and to encourage, you know, additional tourism, education, and the whole bit. And our Starlight Committee is here to help with anything that you guys would need, advice, we can provide documentation that you'd require and help in any of the planning stages. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Any questions from councillors? Deputy, sorry, Councillor Patty Durkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks so much, Tim. I think this is amazing, and what an experience it is to look up at the sky. In particular, during COVID, what we, what I really noticed out in the woods is the fact that there weren't planes going over, you really, so you could actually see so many more stars up there. The question I have for you is, a few years ago, we replaced all of our streetlights with LED lighting. Can they, can that still be used, or is there something that we would have to do to even tilt them down? And was that done? Or is that something that would still need to be done in, in order to help with this?
I did get a message from the Starlight Foundation that the lights did not conform to standards for dark sky, you know, friendly. So it now becomes a retrofit project. You would either have to change the light out, and in some cases, that's the cheapest solution. The other solution would be to add a shield to the light and a filter to change its color, to reduce the color. The installation of the streetlights, that's another thing we're actually working with Nova Scotia Power on, because their technicians need to be very educated as, as far as how to install them correctly. And that's an ongoing problem, I think, with, you know, everywhere, not just Nova Scotia, but, so yeah, those are the, and anybody that has a streetlight that's sort of shining in their area can, could, could call and, and get them to maybe upgrade it or change it.
Yeah, I'm sure that would be a fairly costly project after we just replaced all of the lights, and so, so do you know, is there grants or money available from any organizations that might be willing to help with that?
That I would have to look into.
Okay.
And the, like I said, the retrofit project, even if it's something as simple as adding a light shield, you know, it may, you may look at the cost and see that it's better to just, to, to add that filter as opposed to replacing the whole light.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham.
Excellent presentation. Tim, just, I'd noticed a number of businesses and so forth had their lights turned off at night. Is that, is that part of what you've been doing, working with individual businesses to, to, to reduce the light pollution, or is that just happenstance?
No, that's something that we had started a couple of while, or a few years ago, with a little project we call CAP, The Light Save the Night, and we approached a couple, well, one of the businesses in particular, in Tuscan, for example, they, they made the choice to, to help with that light pollution by reducing, turning out their lights at night. And they're basically, their thought was, we can save money here, and, you know, we don't have to worry as much about security because we have cameras and, and all that sort of thing. So it wasn't their, it wasn't, you know, for them, it's saving money. So it's a win-win for everybody.
Councillor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Great presentation. Where I live, I have seen the Milky Way, but nothing like that, that is for sure. As for the streetlights, I, since they've changed those streetlights where I live, anyway, I find that they just shine right down in that particular area, so I thought that was a, I thought that was a plus, but I guess it's not. One question I had there, you went about the benefits to Yarmouth, attract other businesses. What are the businesses that are, are you referring to or are capable of coming here?
So other businesses may involve astrotourism businesses, you know, or the creation of those products directly, or, you know, you may look at research facilities as well. So that's kind of, yeah, that's kind of the whole, you know, the, the idea that maybe NASA would set up or another institution. For example, we may have other, you know, schools that may decide to build observatories, or even, you know, Halifax may decide to, you know, have another, you know, even our university that we have here, you know, they have, would have the opportunity to build an observatory to further educate, so.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Possible research, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
All right, Tim, thank you very much. I see no one else. Of course. Councillor Nick Hilton, I apologize, I did not see your flashing mic through to, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Tim, for visiting. I actually lived in Quinnen when Tim started the Deep Sky Eye Observatory and had the pleasure of visiting the first week or two that he was open. It's a beautiful, beautiful spot, and highly encourage people to try it, something completely different than what you can do anywhere else. So the most expensive app I have on my phone is an app to view constellations at night, and I, I very much enjoy it, and I, you know, I look forward to visiting you again. So I guess my question is similar to, to Councillor Cushing's. I, I think we can create policy, and I look forward to discussing that with council, including maybe moving towards lights in the future that, that do meet those regulations. So from a tourism or a policy perspective, what can, what should we be doing first in your eyes? What, I guess that, that's my question.
So I would recommend that we follow, that you follow the same sort of pattern as Argyle has done. We've sort of set the stage, so, and we ask, you know, municipalities to approve on, improve on it. So first thing is, of course, to have, assign resources to this task. The next thing would be is to stop the light pollution from increasing, and by doing that, you create the bylaw as part of your land use. So you'll, you know, you can create those laws that for any new construction or any new buildings that are coming up, they would have to conform to whatever the lighting policies that you decide. So that's where you would really need to start. Thank you.
All right, Tim, thank you very much. I see no more, but as I'm sure you're aware, in 2006, the municipality of Yarmouth had a street lighting policy, and back then, it, it stated, source, a streetlight source from a specific as being dark skies friendly, and as such will be outlined with bulbs, heads, shrouding, et cetera, to, but that is something that, that is not currently in our municipal planning strategy and land use bylaws, so, so something like that can be improved upon. This also has to be looked at as well. So anything that we're going to do, certainly going to be keeping dark skies in mind. And as you also pointed out, that we had funded in towards getting certified for the dark skies.
Yeah.
Designation itself. Absolutely.
And, and the way we look at it is, we really need everybody on board in our, in our close knit communities to, for this to work.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, if, if one doesn't do it, then it's kind of, we're kind of wasting our time, because eventually, every, everything grows, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you.
Pleasure having you in.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
All right, move on. Next one on the agenda is item 6.2. We have our Director of Public Works, Derek Sutherland, here. As soon as Tim is done, Derek will take the mic. As soon as Tim is done, Derek will take the mic.
Good afternoon, council and staff. So basically, just some quick overview. With the COVID lens, we've been able to maintain productivity and get our required work completed within our department. Sometimes it's been a little slow in different areas, but this past summer with our full-time staff and taking into account vacations and also we had one member on parental leave, we were able to maintain consistent coverage of all the daily and emergency work that we require. We had a summer student this year for strictly landscaping and mowing duties that basically use rotational lawn sidewalks mainly. That helped quite a bit, keeping ahead of that and freeing up the guys to do other things. Our overall operational budget presently is on target. With the pandemic, we've had some effects on supply chains. Typically, things are slow. Most importantly, the critical stuff has been slow, but we early get it and some of the stuff that's not, not that important is the things we probably can't get as, as fast. Under the Capitol Works banner, our projects are moving forward. Again, the pandemic has created some delays which kind of creates a ripple effect in the progress and ultimately the time, timing of some things for approvals and such. Sidewalk projects are in their final stages of engineering. We're waiting on regulatory approvals and with the tendering remaining. Our projects in the Hebrun Business Park are ongoing. We've had the lot sale of where the salt dome was and presently the move is near completion for that. And the work at 62 Aricom Drive projects are continuing. With our wastewater systems projects, we had some work in the pit in Port Maitland that was a capital. That work, internal work is completed. We still have some work for their Hebrun Dayton pump stations that requires some roof repairs and some door upgrades. That's still in the, in the works. To date, we've had seven new connections to our wastewater system, which they've all fell under new home construction. That increase, it seems to be related, again, to the housing market uptake, but that is good, good for areas, we don't have all of our areas within, that's covered with wastewater, but seven is a, is a strong number for new connections in a short period of time, so that's promising. Then we've had a lot of inquiries too around the wastewater services in, in certain areas, you know, with land purchases and can people hook up and what their options are? So that's another positive from that. Maybe I'll just open the floor and if there's any questions.
So any questions of councillors for Derek? I really can't see your mic, councillor, I apologize for that. Councillor Hilton.
Thanks. Hi Derek, how are you? Just, just for pure interest, the, the work that was being done in Port Maitland where they were trying to separate the, the water coming from houses from water, drain water, was there any work done on that? In the test, I was more interested in the test than when they were going to do the smoke test.
Oh, no, we haven't, we haven't actually got, got to doing that, just again with the, the timing with staffing and things like that, but we have, we have tackled a few known leaks that we had. And one was in the Hebrun Dayton area, we did manage to get in and get that one sealed up last week, actually, but we haven't had a lot of progress in, in actually identifying with the testing methods yet.
Hearing none, seeing none? Thank you very much, Derek.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to item number seven, old business in regards to policies. I'm going to let the CAO remind us on the process and stuff that was followed to get to where we're at. So before we move over to item 7.1, I'm going to give the floor over to the CAO. So Madam CAO, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So council, before you today are three brand new draft policy documents and we actually engaged in quite a bit of work to lead up to the development of these draft documents. The first step was a workshop right here with council a number of months ago. We talked about the things related to these three policies that you were looking for or problems you were looking to solve or things you were looking to mitigate. We took that information and then you had a meeting with the municipal solicitor and we talked about tho, these particular policies, the type of content you were looking to have included and how do we marry the two together to have policies that didn't have any legal missteps in them, that didn't have any silence in them where our municipal solicitor suggested we should, we should be providing for by policy. And so then Darlene took all that information and she did a jurisdictional review and looked for some policy framework. We used the AMA and the NSFM as well as other municipal government in Nova Scotia. So we took all that work, all that information and we developed what we think is pretty good first drafts of some policies for your consideration today. So Darlene is with us, I think she's going to come down maybe and sit at the table and we can go through them one by one and have a chat.
Thank you very much. With that said, we'll move on to item 7.1, council communications policy, C dash 010 dash 21. Do you all have that in front of you? Councillor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just, just a starter question, what other municipality communication policies were looked at when, when creating this one?
Yeah, just hit that button and I'll turn you on, there you go.
I'll have to go back and look, Nick, I can't think right off the top of my head, but we had a few within the province and then we had some that were from out of the province as well. But I can, I'll go back and check that out for you.
Councillor Hilton.
Thank you again. I guess, and when I looked at them, I found even just as local as the town of Yarmouth that the communication policy spoke to how to deal with, deal with complaints that were brought to the, the municipality, which would have been more the direction I was going. I find some of the language in here limits what I can and can't do as an elected official and I feel like my, and I, I think I mentioned this when we were talking about what the policies would look like and in my eyes, we're governed already by, you know, our oath, code of conduct in the MGA, so I do have some issues with some of the language that's in here. Like it says that 3.1 unless another councillor is delegated to do so, it doesn't say how another councillor is delegated to do so. But I just, in the end, I mean, like, there's, there's several, several comments on the way through that I have an issue with. And then the last one is if council members who fail to follow this policy may be subject. So it, to me, it, it depends on what the, the comment is and it depends on who's saying it and it's open to negotiation. So I, I have issues with how they're, they're being presented. Thanks.
Councillor Hilton, before you move on, so, so you have, you had mentioned one in particular and if there's other items in there, I'd certainly like to hear them. Item 3.1, you had mentioned that designated to do so unless another, and you wanted to know in there who, who designates them? Well, usually that, that would be the spokesperson of, of the council at the time, warden. If the warden's not available, it'd be deputy warden, that, that's usually typical protocol. In, in the past, if I was unable to speak, I, I'd certainly try to, myself personally, I've gotten other councillors who were either very well-versed or if something happened in that, in their council area and myself as, as a current warden, if there was something going on in the municipality and, and any specific councillor's district, I've certainly turned over the reins. Councillor Durkey, I can think of one there, the Moby Matts that happened out in Port Maitland. I was unavailable and she was the first one that I designated since she was there, if she was available. Maybe, you're absolutely correct, maybe that should be outlined a little bit better. If you can think of any, just, just bring them out in regards to wording. I don't disagree with the concern that you had and that's the whole reason of the committee of the whole is to come up with some issues that you have. You, you don't have to pass this today or move forward, you can certainly suggest some changes. It's also, if council does not move this forward to council, you can also go through it and send it via email to, through to, to, to Darlene. I said I had trouble speaking today, but that's something you can certainly do. And, sorry, or to the CAO. But this is only draft form, so it does not have to necessarily be passed today. So the next one on the docket would be...
Me.
This thing is not working.
I think it's me.
Yeah, you're on, actually.
And I'm solid, solid rad. I, I read through this and, and my feeling really is that the MGA and our code of conduct really do cover a lot of this. I, I feel like it's very detailed and my, my big concern is the more policies and bylaws you have, the more complicated things get. And I'm just wondering if that's, I know we discuss this policy, but really when it comes down to it, we are covered under the MGA and I feel that it may restrict, or we're concerned about what we can and can't say. And I don't want to feel muzzled, my, my role is to speak on behalf of my constituents and speak to my constituents and following the idea that, that of course, the, the warden or deputy warden is the spokesperson for council. So I, I can't say that I agree with having this at the present time.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hurlbert, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I, whenever I read through policy and I, I put on my, my bargaining hat from my NSCC days and I go through things kind of line by line and that's what I did and I, I'll speak to a couple, I'll highlight a couple of things that I had concerns with and I would, you know, echo the, you know, that we are governed by, you know, other things that have more for me, more weight and supersede any policy that we may or may not, you know, address. For me, when it talks about the very first line where it says committed to a two-way communication, sure, I would 100% agree with that, but this policy, and I know that this policy only talks about us and what we can and can't do and how we do it and when we say it and what we do. But moving forward at, you know, probably not this meeting, but in a future meeting, I will be putting forward a motion that staff need to create a communication policy for MODI that would include communication, how we deal with the public, how, you know, how timely things are done, you know, what the method is and also include a social media policy. I think it's, and I said this before and I didn't make the motion, probably my fault at the time, but I think that before we have a policy on communication as a council, we as MODI, the municipality of the District of Yarmouth, needs to have something for our staff as well, I, I guess for our staff and how we, how we manage those things. So over and above that, I think, you know, when it says committed to a two-way communication, sure, but if, for me, this just seems like it's a one-way, here's what we can't, here's what we can't do. That's how I, I, I see it. I look at 3.4 when it says, it's important that all spokesperson communicate with a single, with a singular and unified message. I totally agree with that and you did clarify who you think the spokesperson is and, you know, I, I think just a little more clear, if this was passed, I, I would be saying we just need to leave it and not do anything further with this until the municipality has a communication policy on their own. 4.1, it talks about, and I think 4.2, we're als, we're always viewed as councillors by the private citizens and I would 100% agree with that. But then 4.5, it says, as individual councillors are contacted by the media, we respond stating our personal opinion. Well, for me, that contradicts itself. If I'm always to be viewed as a councillor, then I'm a councillor and it wouldn't matter how many times I tell the media or the public that I'm giving Sherry Hurlbert's opinion, I'm still a councillor and that would always come first. So for me, 4.1 contradicts, 4.5 contradicts 4.1 and a variety of other things within here because I'm always a councillor. The same with 5.1, I just put C 4.1 and 4.2, so I think, without reading these specifically, I think it's just, I'm always the councillor. I'm never a private citizen when it comes to saying anything about the municipality. Even if I tell them I'm not representing the municipality. 5.4 in correspondence, for correspondence to be placed on the council agenda or receive, or to receive a response from council, it must be addressed to the warden, all of council or warden of, or warden and council in a form so to be certain of the author. So we've had discussions before when things come to us in an email, is it official correspondence? If it comes in a letter registered and we've signed for it, then it's official correspondence? If it's a letter that comes maybe to the CAO, is that official correspondence? I guess for me, what format and if something does come to the CAO, should that not be also included as official correspondence, whether it's addressed to the warden, individual councillor or both of us? Another comment. 6.1, when it talks about a response drafted and then sent to the media for communication, I guess, I think we all know who drafts those or when they're drafted, but, you know, maybe some clarity on who, who's drafting those? Do we see correspondence before it's sent to the media? Do we always see it? Do we sometimes see it? That is another, you know, question. And then 7.1, council members who fail to comply, you know, how does this happen? What's the, you know, what's the procedure for that? You know, oh, I was, I did something wrong, how, how am I reprimanded? What, you know, does it, is it, doesn't the code of conduct for me supersede all of this, you know, 7.1? You know, does, is it the warden? Is it the entire council? You know, if Sherry, if Sherry Hurlbert, councillor for District 3, does something wrong, fails to comply with this policy, what actions, what corrective action, actions may be, you know, applied? How are they applied? And just, just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Hurlbert, for that detailed thing. A lot of your, your concerns in there are valid, but I do know the CAO would like to speak on, on a couple of those and I had a comment about a couple of things afterwards. And we have CAO, you have the floor.
Sure. So under the governance structure for municipalities in Nova Scotia who have a CAO system, council do not set the policies for staff, human resource policies. We have a human resource policy manual and the conduct of the employees and policies like communications policies, social media policies, those are all inside that. So with respect, you know, a social media policy that is a council policy that governs staff doesn't line up with, with our governance structure. So our lawyer even told council that, that yes, there should be a social media policy for staff, but a separate one for council and it's because the accountabilities are so different. The relationship and the responsibilities and the accountabilities of an employee of the municipality are very different than an elected official. Elected officials are accountable to their electorate. You have a code of conduct, you have an oath and you have the Municipal Government Act that kind of puts language to what that means, but it's very different for employees, very different. Consequences are different, expectations are different, even allowances for where you are on a spectrum on a particular communication issue are very different. So that's why the policies for staff are separate than the policies for council on, on these sorts of things. There are a number of items that Councillor Hilton and Councillor Hurlbert have drawn attention to that actually are in there because you asked for them to be in there. And so when we had our workshops, both with the solicitor and here in committee of the whole, we talked about the relationship between 4.1 and 4.5. And it was very important to council that while you all recognize and support kind of the official structure of the warden being the spokesperson and acknowledging that you are always a councillor, once you become an elected official, you still wanted language in the policy that said, but I want to be able to express my personal opinion. So it's in there at your request. Going over to part five, part six, those are, those are the pieces around the two-way communication that's referenced in the preamble. So there's, there is, you know, a lot of information in there about you as councillors and how you interact and how you communicate, but the two-way piece comes from part five and part six. And the only other piece is... the two-way piece comes from Part 5 and Part 6. And the only other piece is around Part 7. So again, when you were with your solicitor, he said to you, "You're going to have a policy. You have to say what happens if." And so that's the what happens if. You're accountable to each other. If one of you feel like there is an issue relating to the code that needs to be discussed, that's up to you to work together on. And right now, we don't have anything in legislation in Nova Scotia that's more specific. And so those are really the only feedback pieces I can offer at this point.
Thank you very much, Madam CIO. One thing, there's a couple of things in here that I really like. Also, as some of you may recall, we're speaking of the solicitor. Yes, absolutely. The warden is the spokesperson for the municipality, but I myself had pointed out that if another councillor in a district, if there was a hide item going on, that they can speak on for themselves as individual as council. And it's also in here, and this is in Item 5.1, but it must be made clear that you're speaking for yourself and not for council, where I'm a little bit different. Whenever I'm speaking on behalf of council and decisions they've made, but I also was sitting at the table as a regular council too, and I always enjoyed being able to speak up. There's a lot of times that I was out there that I was against council as a whole's decision, but I thought it was important that it was in this policy, which it is in Item 5.1, that you can speak on your behalf. But you also have to put out there that on behalf of myself, I'm speaking as an individual for councillor for District X. I think that's very important. And Item 5.4, that's in there for correspondence to be placed on a council agenda, I think that's important. There's been a couple of instances over the past little bit where someone said, "Well, this should go on your council agenda." I like that there's a little clarity that it must be addressed to myself, all of council, or the warden and council. I really want to see that. And also, we want to be very certain of the person who's writing the email. But I do have one question for you, Madam CIO. Should that be specified, whether it's in handwritten, email, electronic, any other type, or not?
So we talked about that a little bit together when we workshopped, and we talked about it with the solicitor, and it's hard to put language around the way people communicate today. Do we go to the nth degree and even start to include text messages? Where is the happy medium? Where's the reasonable landing place for this? And so what the solicitor has suggested is that the salutation be clearly meant for this form here for council. If a resident in councillor Durkey's district pops off a note and they would like councillor Durkey to respond to them about a quick and easy thing, what's the deadline for the grant application or something like that? I don't think anybody around the table would intend for that to be on the council agenda as correspondence. So we were trying to find language that strikes that balance. So yes, we are saying by this language that an email that might come into councillor X's email box but is addressed to all of council, warden and council, or the warden, would have to come forward and be included on an agenda because the expectation at that point would be that it would be part of a meeting and discussed in a public meeting.
Councillor Hilton, I see, you might have seen me looking around. I'm actually trying really hard to see if your microphone's flashing. Is there any other comments or questions or concerns? So I guess, I don't see anymore, so I guess it's a consensus that there were some suggestions, made some changes to send it back to staff? Is that the consensus?
I'm unclear, other than in 3.1, what the specific changes would be.
All right. Deputy Warden, you have the floor.
Yeah, I mean, I think that through you, Mr. Chair, I think that we need to, if we've got suggested changes, I think they need to be suggested changes to wording unless it's something, so there's greater clarity. I mean...
I know one of the comments, and I do kind of see, they're talking about in 4.1, you'll always be recognized as a councillor, even though you are a private citizen, but you're also a councillor, and you're never ever not a councillor, once you're elected, obviously. And then it does talk about, when you're speaking about your own personal opinion, that's meant, I think it's meant to be understood that it's your personal opinion, but it's also your opinion as a councillor. So, I mean, we might add a little something in there to make that even more clear. I think it is fairly clear, this juncture and that, but we might put something in there, maybe overkill, but any event, we all know that when we're communicating council's will, it goes through the, that goes through the warden or doesn't it? And that's clear in the policy. And if you're communicating your personal view as a councillor, they're one and the same, that you clearly state that when you're doing that, that it's not the will of council as a whole necessarily. So I don't have any issue with it. But I think before we leave the meeting, I think that it should be made clear through the chair just what changes are expected to be made, because I'm not certain, I'm clear on exactly what changes are going to be made. Other than, there are concerns, but we will need to have exact wording on what those changes are going to be. And we'll have to have consensus on it. Obviously, the CIO can't move forward with any changes if she doesn't know what those changes are precisely. So I think that's our law as a council to communicate that to her.
So what we could do, Mr. Chair, then, is if each of you want to reflect and maybe send a note along with some suggested wording, what we can do is consolidate those and bring back a summary, and then we can determine if there's consensus of council to move in one direction or another.
All right. Everyone happy with that? Any more input from staff on this part? Moving on, Item Number 7.2, Social Media Policy S-088-21. You all have that in your package? What is the wishes of council? Councillor Hurlbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess going hand in hand with the communication, the proposed communication policy, my overall sense is this is just limiting or putting restrictions on what we may or may not be able to do. And 3.2, it says using the Code of Conduct for elected officials as a guide. Well, I guess I just assumed the Code of Conduct was my guide, not as a guide. It was my guide, and those are the things I use to guide what I say and what I do and how I represent the municipality. And sure, having a policy, I guess, may or may not help me in doing that, but I look at this and the upcoming video conferencing policy, and for me, it's just, it's common sense stuff that, and I will continue to say, that the Municipal Government Act, the Code of Conduct, and my oath cover. And I don't see how having either of these policies is going to help me as an elected official do my job better, or other than my other fellow councillors being able to tell me I should or shouldn't have done something that I think was okay and didn't contradict anything within those superseding documents. I guess for me, all three, especially these two, it's, I don't, in hindsight, yeah, sure, we had workshops and we talked about them, we talked about them with the solicitor, and we agreed originally that we would do this, but in hindsight, for me, I don't see the purpose now. And I'm allowed to change my mind, and I'm allowed to voice that I'm allowed to change my mind. I just feel like I don't get why we now have things that are telling us, that are stifling me, I guess that's how I feel. You know, 3.2.4, no council member shall purport to speak or post on behalf of the municipality. Yeah, we know that. I don't know why we would think it...3.2.3, post on social media subject to MODY's violence in the workplace policy. Yes, we know that too. So I don't understand why some of these things are even, I don't understand why they're in here. And I have more comments, and should we change the wording? No. But my overall, I guess my sense is, can I give you specific words that I need to change or want to change? No. But my overall view is I don't see the need to have either of these policies. Thank you.
Councillor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Sherry. I'm just not sure that we need this, that looking at 3.2.8, 3.2.9, 3.2.10, 3.2.11, do not, do not, do not. And I feel that those issues, and I understand certain things that are in this, but I do feel that this should be covered under the Code of Conduct, of things that we shouldn't do, and some of it is, most of it is all common sense. And so if we follow our Code of Conduct, then we shouldn't need this detailed policy.
Any other comments of council? So what's your wishes? Do you wish to move this policy forward? Do you wish to...Deputy Warden?
Mr. Chair, I think ultimately we can move the policies forward to council. At that juncture, we can vote in the affirmative or negative after we've taken everybody's comments into consideration. I think procedurally, that's probably the proper way to go. So I guess we can move these forward to council, and we can, with the understanding that the feedback comes through the CIO, and she can certainly at the council meeting indicate what changes were entertained on the one particular, and we can vote yea or nay at that point. That's my recommendation.
So before you turn off your mic, which you already did, I was just wondering if you were willing to make a motion to move these forward to regular council. I do see councillor Allen has his mic flashing. So councillor Allen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, Darlene, or maybe one question. When it comes to these policies, you said you have checked with other. There are other municipalities that have these policies in place. They are governed by the same type of Code of Conduct that we are governed by, but they still put their own policies in place to kind of, I don't know, show that we are held, holding ourselves accountable, I guess, as opposed to just going by the Code of Conduct. If we're not stepping outside the lines of the Code of Conduct, I personally don't see the problem. I just feel that it just shows us taking responsibility for our own actions as opposed to waiting for, looking to another body, I guess, just another body to determine what we can and can't do. But so, I know you can't give me numbers, but do a lot of other municipalities have these type of policies in place?
Deputy Warden, can you turn off your mic and then re-hit it again? Darlene, you have the floor.
I didn't find a whole lot. I did find some throughout the province and some outside of the province, but I wouldn't say that a majority have them, that I could find, anyway, through the listserv and through their online policies. So the listserv, when I go out and ask my colleagues what they have, so sometimes they answer, sometimes they don't.
Okay. Well, that's what I was wondering. I was just, I mean, if everybody's got them or most have them, I can't see why we wouldn't. But if, I guess if most are just running on the Code of Conduct that we have sworn an oath to and stuff, I mean, I'm really good either way. We're all responsible for our own actions, and as councillor Hurlbert said, usually common sense is supposed to be there. Sometimes it fails to arrive, but it should be there. So, I agree with councillor Cunningham. On the other hand, if we want to move these to council and vote on whether we want them or not, I mean, I guess that's really the way council kind of works. So if that's the case, I'll make a motion to move, well, we haven't reviewed the third policy, so I don't really want to speak on it yet, but I would make a motion to move the first two policies to council for further discussion. Communications Policy C-010-21 and Social Media Policy S-008-24.
There's a motion on the floor, but I do believe you misspoke on one of them. S- you said C-010-21, and the other one you said S-088-24, though. So you made a motion to move those two policies forward to regular council. So is motion on the floor, do I have a seconder? Seconded by the deputy warden. Is there any discussion, Madam CIO?
So, Mr. Chair, just for clarity, I thought I had received direction to do a little something different with Policy C-010-21. I thought I had received some instructions to go back and sharpen our pencils a little bit more on that one. So just want to clarify, if councillor Allen, if you want to amend your motion and just have it for the social media policy.
There's a lot of mics on. I don't know how to turn, I believe it...but there is a motion on the floor. I guess the question to you, I'm going to just ask you just directly, and I'll ask the seconder directly. Do you wish to modify that motion to only include the social media policy S-088-21, to move that to regular council? Do you wish to do that? Is that okay by the seconder? Okay. So discussion, I do believe it'd be deputy warden Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor first.
Right. I mean, I've been in a lot of situations over the years where it's the role of council to provide good governance, provide clear direction, and the Code of Conduct is very general. Everything isn't in the MGA and everything isn't in the Code of Conduct. This makes it clearer. Not too long ago, we did have an instance where there was a pretty big issue with the councillor in particular, and it was very public and all that type of thing. And policy is the guidepost that provides guidance. There's nothing in those policies that I've seen that, I mean, legislation does prohibit, right? Doesn't permit, doesn't say you can do this, this, this. Generally, it says you can't do this, you can't do that. And I don't see anything in those policies that says, you know, I see a number of things that says you can't do it, but you shouldn't be doing it. And I think that provides greater clarity for councillor. So for instance, I think that should be very clear, because councillors ask that question, right? And when they first come on, they always say, "Well, what can I say? Can I share my personal opinion?" Absolutely, you can share your personal opinion, but it's understood that it's your personal opinion as a councillor, right? And you got to disclose it's your personal opinion. You're not speaking on behalf of the council. Only the warden speaks on, or doesn't, speaks on behalf of council. So, I mean, as far as putting the policies in, and again, one could argue that it's not necessary. I don't have any problem with them. I'm not one that is particularly fervent in putting in a lot of policy, but I don't, having said that, we did ask the CIO to come forth with these policies, and I think consensus at the time. I know some people are, and everybody's right to rethink that, certainly. But given that, I guess it's been moved and seconded. I say that we bring that forward to council, the social media policy for approval. And again, as been discussed, the council communications policy, RFCA will bring it back to Committee of the Whole. So that's what I would say about those issues.
All right. Next one would be councillor Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think, actually, when we discussed it, I said I would not support any social media policy that took away my right to voice any opinion when I thought it was appropriate. And I still stick by that. The last, 4.6, talks about social media posts by councillors are subject to the Floy Pop Act. Is that my personal one? Or is that, like, this document speaks both the coun- Is that my personal one, or is that, like, this document speaks both the counselor... Is that written anywhere else, or is that now just in this document? Did you pull, where was that pulled from?
So I think it came out of our legal workshop. There was conversation around if you have a counselor page, but you also have a personal page, if there's anything on your personal page that ties you to the municipality, the District of Yarmouth, then the FOIPOP legislation could reach into that.
I think I can turn on... Nope. Counselor Hilton, you still have the floor. Your mic is on. Counselor Cushing.
So, and that's fair, but by making this post, doesn't, does it mean that they, by making this policy, does it mean that they don't even have to question it? Does this mean that I'm volunteering my personal and social media counselor pages to the Freedom of Information Act? Does it mean I'm volunteering more information than I have to? That's why I don't necessarily want a policy, because I feel like I'm already covered by other legislation, that I feel like I'm volunteering more through this and that I'm removing my right to say certain things.
So I think the advice from legal counsel is very much along the lines of what the Deputy Warden had shared. You know, there's an understanding that each of you are bringing integrity, honesty, and openness to the work that you do. This provides clarity for anybody who wants to know what the standard is, whether it's a staff member, one of your colleagues on this council, a member of the public, the province, the federal government. But it is also, and experience has taught us this lesson the hard way, it is also a very good tool to have if something goes wrong. And the Deputy Warden is right. Policies, bylaws, legislation, regulations, they are all there to say, "You can do anything you want except this." And if you do do except this, this is how we're going to try to deal with it. That's the nature of a legislative agenda.
Since your mic is off, Counselor Hilton. Counselor Cushing, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I've just been sitting here listening to all the debate on these policies. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we gave direction to our staff to come up with these policies, and which they have, which are in front of us. Yes, some could be tweaked a little bit here and there, but they're there. We try to refer to the MGA Act a lot, which is good, but however, this is, I can't pronounce the word properly, right? But anyway, it's mainly directed at the municipality of Yarmouth. So I don't have a real big issue with the policies, especially when we ask staff to develop such. And now, all of a sudden, we're saying, "Well, just chuck them the heck out." No, I don't, I just, staff put a lot of time into this, I would assume, and I think we got to be respectful of that. And are we trying to hide something? I don't think so. I think this is pretty clear, you know, to my, to my point. So, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Since there's no more microphones flashing, there is a motion on the floor to move the social media policy, S-088-21, to regular counsel. So I'm going to call for the question on the motion on the floor. Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded. Vote of four to three in the affirmative. Motion's being carried forward to regular counsel. No, that's a good question. Previous wardens have asked if you want, do you have your name recorded? So I guess I should carry on in the thing. Do all those who voted in the negative want their names recorded? All right. So all three wanted their names recorded. That would be Counselor Durkey, Counselor Hilton, and Counselor Sheri Herbert. All right. Moving on to item 7.3, video conferencing policy, V-1064-21. You all have that in your package? What is the wishes of counsel? I see Counselor Daniel Allen. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fortunately, I have a commitment, I have a work commitment, so I will be stepping away for the rest of the meeting.
All right. So please note in the meeting minutes that Counselor Allen has stepped away at 5:00 sharp on the council table. Since there's an even number of voting members present, any motion, should it come to the floor and it's voted three to three, would be in the affirmative, negative. Just a reminder. Yes, the motion would be lost. Counselor Herbert, could you please turn off Counselor Allen's microphone? All right. That, there's a pulse, we're on item 7.3. The first one on the docket would be Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham.
All right. So I'll move that we forward video conferencing policy, V-106421, to counsel for approval. And just note that this will enable us to participate remotely in the future, potentially. So, thank you.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Motion on the floor, do I have a seconder? Third and final call, motion on the floor, do I have a seconder? Since the motion did not receive a seconder, that motion falls. However, there is, item 7.3, video conferencing policy, V-1064-21. What is the wishes of counsel? Counselor Sheri Herbert.
So, are we allowed, so in the previous 7.1 and 7.2, we actually talked about things before we made the motion, so is it okay if I give my comments on why I may not have seconded this?
I would have preferred that you had seconded the original motion, but we can have discussions since this is committee of the whole before if you want to make another motion. So...
Can I make my?
Yes, you have the floor, Counselor.
Just because with the communication policy and social media, we didn't make the motion first. We actually talked about things before we made the motion. Anyway, that's fine. I'll just make my comments. I think overall, video conferencing policy, you know, probably, you know, a good idea. I think that in, you know, the last year and a half, we have, we've learned that we can govern effectively using video conference, you know, the technology that we have. So in 1.1, it talks about by video conferencing where extenuating circumstances prevent attendance in person. So my question, or I guess comment would be, who defines extenuating? What are those, you know, things? Because I look at some of our committees, and this does talk about committees and committee chairs, and I think, you know, is it necessary that every single thing we do be done face to face here when, for the last year and a half, we have been effectively governing our council and our committees? And I just think extenuating seems kind of heavy when a chair could say, "Yes." Why can't we have, you know, three of the five meetings a year by video conference because it's January, February, March, and April, or January, February, March, and the weather may not be, you know, great? One of, those are one comment. 3.3, when it talks about meetings by video conference provided open to the public, video, when it says video conferencing needs to be open to the public, but then we have some committee meetings that are not live streamed, they're not recorded, the minutes may be there. So I'm just wondering how we differentiate video conferencing versus regular governance? And I'll just continue a couple more things. 4.2.1, where it says, "Three business days prior to the meeting, we provide written notice to the warden or committee chair indicating the member wishes to attend by a video conference." I'm not sure three days is necessary. We've, again, we've done it for a year and a half, and we've never, you know, we've decided on it before that, but if somebody is home with an illness and they need to video conference in, and they only are sick the day before, and they can't make the meeting, why wouldn't we allow them to attend via video conference? And then clarity on 4.2.2. Does that mean that if I attend two meetings via video conference in the 12 months, I can't attend any more via video conference in the 12-month period? Or am I just reading that wrong? And is that per committee or per everything I do as a counselor? I'm not sure on that one. And that's about it. Thank you.
Madam CIO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you to Counselor Herbert, I think in the preamble under 1.1, some language substituting the word extenuating that maybe points to something along the lines of, "By video conference, under circumstances," as set out below, because there are a variety of circumstances described in the parts below, and they are specific, so that's probably a good idea to look at changing that language. In part four, where the concerns were raised, so we need to contextualize 4.2.1 and 4.2.2 under the preamble. So the provisions in part four are where one or more council members, so basically the warden or the committee chair has called a meeting. The meeting has been called for in person, but a member of the committee or council would like to participate by video conference, and it creates the framework for that to happen. I would suggest that three business days is more of something that is actually being considerative staff. So if we're having a meeting in person in this room, and one counselor wants to attend by video conference, there's work we have to do to get ready for that, and so we do need notice for that. And then 4.2.2, the intention is, is that if it's only, if the meeting has been called for in person and a particular member wants the privilege of attending by video conference, because citizens are appointed to attend the meetings, and counselors are elected to attend the meetings, it's the chair's prerogative to call the meeting for a certain place. If the chair is calling the meeting in person, and you've been appointed or elected to attend those meetings, it's, this is in there to suggest that, you know, generally speaking, you're expected to participate in the meeting in the way the chair calls for it. It's open for debate. This is a model policy. It's a draft, but it's a way to basically say, you know, generally speaking, you know, we want our citizen reps and our elected officials to participate in the meetings as much as possible in the way everybody else is participating in the meetings, but providing for alternate plans. And I think those were the questions.
Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham.
Right. Counselor Herbert brings up some good points, and certainly I've got another one to add that I just kind of thought, I hadn't really thought about the issue before, but the extenuating piece. So I guess the overarching reason to have this policy is to allow somebody that's maybe, you know, somebody may be incapacitated, they may be, you know, physically unable to, that's one possibility, somebody might be away for work and they won't attend. But, and so I guess maybe, and I made the motion initially, and that's typically how things are done, somebody makes a motion, seconded, then there's a discussion, and if there are, you know, amendments made to the policy, that goes through CIO, and you can certainly understand that that can be made. But perhaps the best thing to do is not move this on to counsel for approval, maybe it's to bring it back to the committee of the whole again. Maybe that's a better way forward with some of the amendments talked about, and then we can move it to counsel at that point. I don't know what other people think. That's just my suggestion, given what I've heard.
What is the wishes of counsel? Is there any more discussion? Counselor Durkey? I'm sorry, it would have been Counselor Hilton.
I just don't can't see her.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, you know, obviously, we've all read through these. Extenuating was the word that stuck out for me, and really, and just like the communication policy, we should be encouraging new ways to be involved in council, in council work, you know, for the public, for us, whatever. The fact that we're live streaming Zoom meetings but not live streaming, you know, in-person meetings, I think we should be, you know, investing in technology that allows us to be more transparent, more public. And this policy should be encouraging the use of video conferencing to make sure that people can attend the meetings that they need to attend. Of course, you should attend in person if you can, but I sat on a meeting this week with members of all our two neighboring councils, and, you know, we've been doing it by teleconference for months now, and the question was brought up, "Why wouldn't we continue to do that? They have to travel in a, you know, half an hour each way for an hour meeting. The work still gets done. It's good work, good communication." I think, you know, on Zoom, you're looking everyone in the face, so just as much as you are in person. So I would like to see a policy that encourages participation and not limits it. Thank you.
Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Warden. I guess my thoughts on this is, in the past, years ago, there were apparently an issue where there were, there was a counselor who went to Florida and, you know, wanted to continue participating in meetings from Florida. And, boy, things have changed now since we've had COVID, and, you know, we created that Zoom meeting. But that's something we certainly would not want to encourage or happen, right? I mean, I think our taking on this responsibility is, our responsibility is, if we're having a meeting in person, then we do our best to attend in person, because we all know, you know, there's body language and different things, facial expressions, and things that I think for everybody, it's very different than Zoom. That being said, we do want to encourage, if someone is home with a health issue or is, has to be in Halifax for other issues, there's no reason why they still couldn't attend our meetings. Or if there's dual meetings and they have to be somewhere, then I feel that this might restrict that in some regards. And I understand where you're saying, "Well, it's the warden or the chairperson's call." But is it? You know, we're all on the same level here, and if a person is being responsible, and then they should be able to say, "Look, I can't be there, but can I," you know, not even have to say, "I can't be there, I would like to attend by," it shouldn't need approval, I think, of a committee chair or the warden to do that, that we need to think in terms of, you know, how things have gone in the past couple of years, unfortunately. And so some of the change has been really good because it's allowed people to participate who couldn't be in person. And I don't think there's a problem with that. So I think that if we were to do this video conference, and I understand in some respects why we need to, and it comes back to that Florida situation, you know, it's not right for me to take off to some country for X amount of time and be away for three months or whatever, because I've signed on to be here. However, that being said, if there's one meeting where someone's away and says, "Look, I could attend," then, you know, that's to their benefit. I think that's to our benefit as well. So that's just my thought.
Counselor Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One final comment from me. This summer, I planned my vacation to make sure that I was here for committee of the whole and, you know, committee meetings that I needed to be involved in. And then we had the public, so I had things planned out, and we had the public participation meeting around, you know, some of the ongoing topics we have here at council. And I was able to participate, and I know it was online, everything was online, but I was able to participate in that. If it had been face to face, I wouldn't have been able to be here, but I gained valuable insight in future work that we'll have, that the PAC will have to do, and we as council will probably have to do. And if that hadn't been on Zoom, I wouldn't have been able to participate, even though everything I had done in my life was to accommodate me being here for everything. And then that particular, you know, instance came up, and because it was online, I was able to participate. So I think that, you know, there's great value in video conferencing and the policy. I, you know, just would think, I just think that we need to be a little more positive in our language and encouraging and not so limiting.
Counselor Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Again, I've been listening to the discussions for and against video conferencing and whatnot. Personally, I think meeting in person is a very good thing. However, with the ability, if one counselor or two counselors or somebody on the committee members are not available, then sure, the video conference can be used. However, Counselor Durkey brought up a great point.
Thank you.
And that's abuse of that video conference. How do we keep that in check? You know? Do I have a relative in Florida that's sick and I have to go down there? It's always say, you go down there and be with that person, and actually, I'm out on the golf course and having a few bottles of water at nighttime and, well, I guess I'll go on the conference now. So I think we've got to be very careful how we approve that, and I think Patty made a great point about that, like, you know, we seen that on the news down in, through the states, what they were doing, and even in Nova Scotia, I believe, up in the Cape Britton area, I believe. So I think we've got to be very, very careful how we wear this. You know, I certainly want to be transparent, and I think, you know, in general, I believe our municipality is very transparent, but there's always going to be arguments that, no, we're not, we should be doing more, but, you know, how much, how much do we have to do to please everybody at every little point? We are elected here by the people in our districts to do business for the municipality of Yarmouth, and we should make every effort possible to attend in person at meetings that are called, that are scheduled. Unless there's a circumstance that happens that the person can't be there, that's great that we're able to be able to accommodate that, but let's be very careful how we, what's the proper word I'm looking for? How we, what's good and what's bad about it, right? So it's not abused, I guess. That's my really concern, because I'm afraid it would be abused. Thank you.
Deputy Warden.
Right. I think people have brought up really good points, everybody, and policy is always tough because you want it to be flexible, and I guess the ultimate flexibility is kind of having the warden have the discretion to allow that. Staff time is an issue, even technically getting it together, right? I mean, what we've done at this point, everybody's been on at one time, it's been consistent. You know, the Zoom meetings, everybody's been playing kind of by the same rules because we've had to because of COVID, and it's worked reasonably well. And again, I'm thinking to myself, well, Lauren brought up a good example, somebody's in Florida visiting a sick aunt, how do you know? How do you police all this? And again, that's about controlling things and saying right and wrong. I guess at the end of the day, if a counselor's on and they're participating and they're voting and they're attending, then at the end of the day, you could make the argument, I'm not necessarily saying I'm going to, that they're fulfilling their duty. Having said that, I think it is better, obviously, for, I think everybody can agree, if you're here in person, whether you have to drive a half hour, an hour, sometimes, I've driven, you know, late at night to be here, so in person. And so I think we're also in a little bit of an odd situation where we're not employees necessarily, we're judged by our electors at the end of the day, so that's important to remember. And really, other people have said, and again, there's a continuum, other people have said, well, this should be enabling, this should enable as many people to participate. So when you start getting into enabling maximum participation, it's really tough to also judge about whether an absence, a physical absence is permissible or not, right? So I don't know, I mean, you can make the argument, you know, I've got to get out and play that 10, I don't golf and I don't go to Florida every year, but somebody could say, listen, it's due, for my mental health, I've got to go to Florida to golf for six months. How do I know that's not true? I don't, one way or another. So really, I guess, in my view, it's more about enabling people to attend, you know, in a reasonable manner, respecting staff and the technological ability and the cost. And, you know, when somebody says abuse, one person's abuse is not another person's abuse, right? And to police that is going to be very, very difficult for warden, for council, whoever it is that makes up the decision, even that. So extenuating circumstances is, I do agree, a difficult word to put in to a policy, because somebody's got to judge that. And so I think maybe some of the points have been good. I guess philosophically, we've got to decide what the policy is intending to do, is it intending to address an extenuating circumstances now and again when a person can't be there? And again, extenuating is in the eye of the beholder, so that very thing could happen. You could have somebody that says, I've just got to get out of the winter, you know, I can't, I can't stand it. So are you denying a person the chance to participate on council? I don't know, maybe, most people would probably say no to that. But still, again, you get into that whole judgment piece, so I think first, we've got to decide on what we want to accomplish with the policy, and, you know, I mean, that clarity around that's always difficult to arrive at. We've got everything from sort of extenuating circumstances once in a while to allowing everybody to participate to the greatest extent possible using technology. So I think we've got to narrow that a little bit for the CIO to come back maybe with something. So those are my initial thoughts. I don't know where I land, but the policy has to be workable and governable, otherwise it's not ultimately useful.
I was going to speak, but I do know Counselor Hilton, pass for the floor again. So Counselor Hilton, you at the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Trevor, I think nailed it. We are trying to be a more inclusive council, and this is an easy way to do that. It creates flexibility for, well, I mean, it benefits myself, but I truly enjoy being here with you guys most time. And it's not that I'm trying to get out of this, it's that I think why I create limiting policies, the same as the communication and the social media policy for me. He said that, you know, either we've all been on or we've all been off, but we just attended one with legal not that long ago. He gave great advice, we've quoted that advice today, and, you know, the majority, if not all, our conversations with Mr. Cummings will be on Zoom. We should be investing in technology that allows us to do that more often and in a better way, that's easily set up in a moment's notice. I mean, what really is the risk? If someone wants to attend in Florida while playing golf, they'll get voted out at the next election. Like, that's what the risk is to you. It really is up to our electors to decide who they want to represent us and how they want to do that. Now, saying that, that doesn't mean that that guy isn't, or that person isn't doing their job efficiently. It's a different world, it's a world of technology. We're sitting here between two panes of glass, I'm not really sure what the difference is sitting in front of a screen. So they'll decide, I'd like to see policies that promote inclusion, and to me, this is an easy one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hilton, and I'm going to have to disagree with you. I think this is not an easy one. First of all, video conferencing, as far as I'm concerned, there should be no hybrids, no some in-person, some people attending, whether they're playing golf or they're actually at home. I have a big problem with the way that some of the video conferencing has been done over the past year and a half. We've had interruptions, and I have to put my hand up, I was one of those guilty ones. My dog all of a sudden jumped up and backed me. My son comes from downstairs saying, Dad, supper ready? There's a big problem with, I understand that it's, that you have to be flexible and be able to include some people. Some people have disabilities, they would love to attend. I certainly get that. I get that. But as far as I'm concerned, this is just opening the door for abuse. As far as I'm concerned, when a chair, whoever that may be, whether it be the warden of the council, whether it be a chairman of, we just had a EMO meeting, which I'm also the chair of, I made the decision that we are still going to have it in person. We couldn't have it in person in the EMO building in town because it was too small, but I made the call that we're going to have it in the alternate EOC. I don't believe, I don't think there should be hybrid models. I do think there's a time and place for video conferencing. There's also travel, it would save money if, but it's either for me, one or the other. Hybrids are very difficult to manage as a chair, extremely difficult. We also hear a lot of people with some of the concerns that's happening around the municipality right now. What do I keep hearing? We want to have that meeting in person. When are they going to have it in your council chambers? I think he's, me personally, I do believe there's a time and place for video conferencing policy, but it should be one or the other. That's my own personal opinion, whatever staff comes back with, because obviously there are some suggestions and stuff. Some of you may disagree with me on that, but, boy, Counselor Durkey had originally brought up the counselor in Florida. Do you think it's fair if I go on vacation, as soon as I'm allowed to go down in the states for vacation, I'm going for three weeks? Do you think it's fair that the warden of the municipality district, the Yarmouth, chairs a meeting from Florida while the rest of you here? I don't think so. Not when I'm on vacation. Oh, God, no. And number two, I would never do that. I think that's unfair, disingenuous to the municipality of the residents that elected you here. Yeah, you give them four years, but, boy, there's going to be a lot of damage done in those four years that we're sitting here. I don't know. I'd really have to think about this. I read over this policy once, and there's a lot of good points that were made on the reason why we should have it, but there should be some reins on this, as far as I'm concerned. That's all I'm going to say about that, as Forrest Gump would say. Deputy, sorry, whose microphone come on? I believe it was Counselor Durkey.
Counselor Durkey. There's no question that team building and relationships occur best when you're in person. And however, I just want to reiterate that I do feel that under certain circumstances, people should be, there should be hybrid, and I'll give you an example of when, you know, if you're going to have a 15-minute interview, I'm referring to committee, not just council, but if you're going to have a 15-minute to 20-minute meeting with members in our region, that, then, you know, if a number of them are here, then we can all get together, but to have people drive from Barrington and Digby for a 15-minute meeting is not really fair to them. And so those situations, I feel hybrids are best. Or you have people who have other jobs, and if they can take a break from their job to join a meeting, then that allows them to return much faster to the job they're working on. So I would definitely support, you know, a hybrid type of meeting.
Yeah, so I think, I think the policy after review, you know, I've reviewed it and so forth, and, I mean, it's got a lot of merit, certainly, is circulated. I'm looking at 4.2, so it's a subject to provisions of this policy, the warden or committee chair shall grant permission to a member to participate in a meeting or part of a meeting by video conference if, you know, you've got the three-day prior, we've talked about that, the member's not participated in more than two meetings by video conference in the preceding 12 months, in addition to meetings in which all members participated by video conference and so on. So there are some restrictions there, certainly. But, I mean, so I don't think it's going to run amok, and you're going to have somebody in Florida for the entire winter, that doesn't allow for that. So I think, and generally speaking, I mean, you're always going to have people argue one side of that issue or another, certainly, and neither's right nor wrong, it's just a matter of opinion. But at the end of the day, I mean, I think that seems fairly reasonable, but, I mean, we could always have, you know, just like your absence is now, you know, council can excuse somebody from the table, I would think that you could also permit somebody additional, like, that would kind of be minimalistic type time. But if there were extenuating circumstances, let's say somebody was ill, that would be up to council to decide, if you're going to go beyond that. So if they used the two times, they'd have to come to council and maybe have some forewarning, obviously, and, you know, maybe the CIO could say this is technologically feasible or not, or all those other types of things, but ultimately, that could be a judgment of council beyond that. That's just, I'm just throwing that out for conversation, not saying that's the way to go or not.
Madam CIO, you had a comment?
So I want to thank council for the feedback, because when we're in new territory and we get to chew on things, all three of these are new. All three of these are new, it's new territory, we have some lived experience, we can all think of some examples which, you know, make us feel like, yes, we want some guidelines or no, we don't, or whatever. With respect to video conferencing, the only other dynamic that I haven't heard anybody bring up that I feel is important to bring to the floor and add to kind of what you're thinking about, is that we have to remember too about the experience of the public, the viewers. So there was a day and time when the only way an individual could participate in a public meeting was to be in the room where the meeting was held. Otherwise than that, they couldn't, they could only ever see the minutes. We've come a long way, we've got all kinds of technology, we've been live streaming our meetings for years now, I think since 2016, probably, and more and more and more our committee meetings are being recorded and made available, maybe not necessarily live streamed, and of course, our minutes are always available to the public. So when we were developing this, and we talked to the AMA, and we talked to our solicitor, the other thing to consider when we create our framework is what's the experience going to be for the people who will be observing the meeting? Will they know for sure who's saying what, who's voting what way? And then for the chair and for the municipal clerk, will they be able to provide the parliamentary process and record the proceedings accurately? So those are just a couple of other things that go into this mix, to try and, as Counselor Hilton said, make this a positive thing, that we're moving forward, we're modern, we're contemporary, and, you know, we're trying to remove some barriers, quite frankly, to people participating in the democratic process, whether they're as elected officials or they want to volunteer, or they want to be observers. So, you know, we're really rolling up our sleeves here, for sure.
Something that someone had mentioned to me too, in regards to inclusion, was what about people who don't have internet, choose not to have internet and/or just don't want the technology? So if you have those meetings online and you don't have access, don't want to own a computer or anything like that, that's kind of tough. I'm just throwing, just being the devil's advocate here, there's been a lot of good discussion, believe it or not, some of you have changed my process of thinking, but I do think that the rant that I had earlier about hybrid models that I hate, as a chairperson who chairs, some hybrid models, it really sucks, with a lack of better words. So, Deputy Warden.
Yeah, it's good conversation. I'm tended to think that the policy even as written is a pretty good first step, because we do have some limiting factors. We don't have the technology right now really to do that seamlessly, and to have everybody see, like, if we, if one of us were in Halifax or St. John or wherever tonight, I mean, the viewing public, we've got the camera up there, they can't see you. I think, I think that the public would be forgiving of a meeting or two during the year, you know, especially a really important one that you wanted to sit in on, pivotal vote, that type of thing. I think that's reasonable, and I think it's, because it's so new, I think maybe a baby step or first step is probably, thinking about it a little bit, probably preferred. So I think as it's written, we could start there, and as the technology evolves, and maybe, to next point, maybe we do want to buy more technology and loosen the policy and broaden it more, because I think ultimately, the goal would be to enable folks to attend quite regularly, you know, out in the future via technology. I mean, just think how far we've moved in a year, but I'm not thinking we're going to move that much further ahead in one year, but, you know, I think that does, you know, let's say, let's say somebody goes on whatever. But, you know, I think that does, you know, let's say, let's say somebody goes on, whatever is on, is not here, and there's a pivotal vote that comes up. That happens sometimes. We have to call an emergency council meeting. They really should have their voice heard, right? And we always want to do that. We always want to have everybody here. So, I mean, staff's developed it, and yes, there, we could say, we shouldn't allow it at all, we should allow it carte blanche, but there are some technological limitations. And I think the CEO brings up a really good point in that people just can't see it, it's tough to record, all those other things. But having said that, I think we could make an exception a couple times a year for folks in exceptional circumstances. And we could probably work on that extenuating circumstance, because it might, extenuating, I don't know if you're on holiday, you didn't know an emergency meeting was going to come up, I don't know if that's extenuating or not. It probably is, but who's to say? But I think if you allow a couple of those meetings a year, I think that is a good balance between not burdening staff, not causing trouble recording the, because they could get in a situation where we allow that carte blanche, and all of a sudden, you haven't got one or two, one councillor doing it, you've got four councillors doing it. And then that's impossible for the recording officials to, you know, really, and the chair to control the meeting. So all, I think we should move this ahead for approval. And I know it's obviously flawed to the extent that we can't foresee what's going to happen in the future. And I think we work with it as it is, and then we change it as we adopt and gain new technology. So for instance, I think really, the changes in the policy will really be more dependent on the technology we have than, than kind of judgments about people being here or not, right? I don't think that's the issue in my mind, whether somebody's here or not. I think it's how it serves the public in the vote. So I'll make the motion to move this forward to council. And again, we don't, we don't have to approve it. We can alter it between now and then. Video conferencing policy V-106421. And I guess, you know, it's fire readying. I think it's pretty good, but I think we need to start somewhere. And I kind of listen to everybody. I don't, I would, I guess theoretically, like to have it more available, but I don't think we're ready for it. We just don't have the technology and nor the ability really to do it safely, in terms of governance process. So I'll make that a motion.
So there's a motion on the floor in regards to moving this forward to regular council. I'm going to ask the CEO in that regard, because this motion was already brought to the floor, it wasn't seconded, it fell. So what happens in that?
So I was just doing a little reading on that. And when, when, when a motion is made, and there's no seconder, but it's still debated, then Robert's Rule says that that means the assembly has felt there was value enough to debate it, and it could be voted on.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to move this video conference policy V-06421 on the floor, to move that forward to regular council, or is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Is there any discussion on that? Counselor Cushing, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I never voted, never seconded it during the first go-around until I started hearing some of the, some of the discussions about this. And I'll use this word that I don't like to use a lot, is transparency. I think, again, our municipality is very transparent. If we decide that we're going to start going video and wherever, how transparent is that, number one? Number two, I know some seniors in my district alone, they don't have a computer. They don't have a cellphone, but they have a TV, you know? They may want to see what's going on, so they can watch it at one time or another. So I think it's important for us to serve the public the best way we can. The younger people, maybe they would love to do video conferencing all the time, but we've got to look at everybody, not just any certain group. We have to look at everybody and make sure we serve the public properly. And I agree, there's at times. And I'll give you an example of times. My first term as councillor, I went on vacation, I went to Arizona, and a special meeting came up, and I was on the phone. It was something that wasn't planned, but I was able to give my input. You know, if, if you decide to go on vacation, and as Counselor Cunningham said, that, you know, when a special meeting is, you know, that comes up that we're not aware of, it wasn't planned, there's an opportunity to do that video conference, you know? So, so it does have some valid points, but we must remember, we're here to serve the public and make sure they have everything that they need to ask questions, to view, to understand. So that's very important. So I'm, I'm in favor of, what was the word that John and Patty were using? Hybrid. You know, John was against hybrid, but Patty was for hybrid. And I think that's a good thing to have in certain situations, but it has to be closely monitored and some rules to follow. Thank you.
Next one up on the dock is Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just listening, like, when we talk about emergency meetings, if it's that important, all attempts should be made to include every councillor. So video conferencing should be a must. If someone's away, they can be included. That opportunity does exist. Hybrid meetings, we're doing them already, they're working. By the no-internet argument would mean that no in-person meetings would be allowed if you don't have, if residents don't have a car. So we should be making policies that include everybody and have every opportunity, and younger people are included in everybody. So if that works, we should be making extra effort to engage them and get them involved in, in politics. It's the community that we're going to leave behind for them. It's all part of inclusion. And we, I keep hearing reasons not to do it, but in my opinion, there's no reason not to do it. So make policies that include everyone. There's no reason at all really to not include video conferencing in a positive way. We can all make excuses why not to do it, but I have a question for the CEO. Like, a number of months ago, we talked about COVID relief money and how we were going to spend it. Did we decide what was acceptable and what was not? And could we upgrade our video conferencing equipment through that fund?
Is that a different discussion altogether than what the motion on the floor is? I'm beginning to think it is. That's a question that would be answered.
After you call the question?
After I call the question on this. It's getting a little bit out there, because we've been beating this issue around now for an hour. And I'd like to call the question on this. So I think that's starting to get a little bit outside, but that is a valid question, Counselor Hilton. Maybe we could add that to another agenda item. Counselor Holber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I'm sitting here listening, as the Chair of the Accessibility Committee, and I, it resonates with me that I understand that there are people who don't have internet, but there are also people who watch us from home, who do have internet, that can't get here. And I wonder, you know, if the 10 or 12 people who are watching us right now would actually have gotten in their cars and drove here this afternoon to sit in our audience to watch us. Prob, I don't know the answer to that. I'm thinking probably not, because our gallery is empty right now. So I think that, you know, to Counselor Hilton's point, we need to do everything possible, and it may be painful for us, it may cost us, you know, some money, but I think we need to be doing everything possible to make sure we are inclusive and as accessible as possible. And to Counselor Cushing's point about being away on vacation and attending via teleconference, if you'll notice in this, in this video conference policy, it says participation in meetings by teleconference is not permitted. So if, if, if what you did before by a phone was, was working at the time, because that's the means that we had for you to do that, fine, but this policy is saying teleconference is not permitted, and I think I would agree to that, you know, totally, because we now have technology that enables us. You know, someone talked about our solicitor. He attends when he needs to, and we're in our lounge, and we're capable of doing that. Accessibility Advisory Committee meetings, we've had a hybrid model where I, you know, I've chaired, and we've had someone, you know, attend from their work location because they couldn't make it here on time. So I think for me, you know, the policy in and of itself, you know, great, I think that there can be, you know, some tweaks to it, and some things that, you know, fundamentally, we need to be moving forward to be inclusive and not, you know, and I think transparency is part of that. You know, I don't think we're not being transparent by doing some of these things. I think we're being more transparent. We have more availability of having people watch us, see us, communicate with us, listen to us. So, you know, I probably, 10 minutes ago, I probably would have said, no, I don't want to move this forward to council, but I think with, you know, some tweaks and, you know, some wording changes, I think that it's beneficial for us. Thank you.
Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Counselor Cushing's point, just to clarify that if we do a hybrid model, anybody who's watching still sees everybody. They see, they would see people in, in council chambers, and anybody who was calling in from home or wherever they were, they would still see those people on the screen. So every, so you're not, we wouldn't be missing anything or anybody else's comments from, for those who had called in, or had zoomed in.
Any more discussion on that? If not, I'll call for the question on the motion. Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, nay. Motion is defeated. A vote of three to three. So this will not be moving forward to regular council. So Madam CEO, I do have a question for you in process. What happens to this item?
Unless there's direction, I do nothing with it, and it dies.
Is anyone, Counselor Hilton?
So even with all the discussion that was had here today, there's no way to revise that, to bring that back? Interesting. So if we would have moved it to council, would the revisions have been made?
What revisions?
Okay, that's my question. So it was moved to council the way it was presented, and it got voted down?
Correct.
So Counselor Hilton, the way to keep it on council's agenda would be for somebody to make a motion similar to what we did with the communication policy?
I will make that motion, that we send it back to staff to revise and present it at another committee of the whole meeting, taking into account what was said here today.
Okay, a motion on the floor, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor, do you second that, Counselor Durkey?
Yes.
All right, seconded by Counselor Durkey. So there's a motion on the floor to send video conferencing policy V-06421 to staff to rework. So Counselor Durkey, you do have the, I thought you had the floor.
Sorry, I pressed my button.
Yeah, you have it now. You have the floor, Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Warden Cunningham. I do think this is really important. I think it's something that we have to, we will have to discuss and make a decision about, whether it's a specific policy or not. We have to decide, are we going to allow this in future or not? Because it is something that needs to be addressed, considering new technology and the situation that we're in today, and the fact that we can join in that regard. I think the discussion's been really great and necessary, but I do think that we do have to make some decision on what, what council will allow in future. And that's probably best driven by policy.
Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I just want to be clear. I mean, in a sense, and I think the CEO needs clarity, I don't think, we've given direction to rework the policy, but we haven't provided any precise ways in which to, there's no agreement among council about, and the intent originally in, in filing, the motion was defeated on a vote three to three, which is okay. But having said that, the rationale that was put forward was, you know, we, something's, it's a start. And maybe there's issues with it, there's a start, but we've got to give the CEO some direction as to what those changes will be. Otherwise, it's the same policy coming back. And I don't think I'm wrong in that. So again, some folks wanted, want it very, very open, but again, there are some limitations with the technology clearly. And also with the governance piece about being able to record how many people, as it stands now, it's, it's really, the policy is kind of, in a sense, has a strength of being limiting in terms of how many people and how often, but that's both a strength and a weakness, obviously. I mean, in an ideal world, you'd want everybody be able to participate and be seen and be recorded, but I'm not so sure we have the technological ability at this point. So I guess the thinking was that we'd, we'd start with something modest and maybe alter the policy as we got better at it and more practice and maybe more inclusive. Having said that, I'll leave it there. If people have got suggestions, I guess, I guess not people, I guess it's got to be us as a council would have suggestions about alterations that would make it palatable to a positive vote.
Counselor Durkey.
I'll make this quick. I'm thinking that the best recommendation or suggestion would be that we go back and do research to see if someone, what else other places have done, because I'm sure that's on the minds of all other councils across, across the province in particular. And, you know, you know, the old keep it simple, stupid, that if we can find something that's a little bit more in line with what we've discussed today, and then, and then come back with that, that might be of benefit, a thought suggestion.
Madam CEO.
So we've, we've just spent months doing research. It's the, it's the model policy from the Association of Municipal Administrators of Nova Scotia. It's been vetted by our legal. If I'm hearing all, all of you as individuals correctly, I'm thinking that there's a willingness to try and have the language be more positive, more enabling, that this is a forward-thinking, contemporary approach to governance. But what I'm hearing is there is an individual who does not support hybrid. So I need to know, is hybrid in the policy, or is hybrid out of the policy? And that can be decided right now.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Our CEO kind of alluded to my, my question that was going to be. Counselor Durkey mentioned this. Oh, excuse me. Counselor Durkey alluded to that, you'll see what other municipalities have done regarding something like this. And my, my question would be, okay, we put it back to staff, and the staff look at every, all the other municipalities, see what they have, and they come back with the same thing. And our CEO had said this is what came through the legal and through your research that you've done. So are we, are we going to be back at the same place debating the same thing again? But the word hybrid is, is, I think is the, is the key word here. Thank you.
I see Counselor Hilton's microphone flashing, but I'm going to put this out there. For me, a hybrid would be a no-go. That's my own personal opinion. However, majority rules. Counselor Hilton?
That was my question. How, how do you take that consensus right now?
I think persuade.
No, well, ask the question.
That would have to be a subsidiary motion, not a motion, I guess I could do.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could, if, if there's a, if it's, if there's a specific amendment that the assembly would like to see made, the clearest way to do that for the record is to have a mover and a seconder in a vote on it.
But there's a motion on the floor now, so, yeah, there is. There's a motion to move this policy back to staff. So you'd have to amend the motion that's currently on the floor, if you wish to either add or remove the hybrid, whatever you want. add or remove the hybrid, whatever you want to do with it. But right now, as it stands, there's a motion on the floor to move the video conferencing policy V dash zero six four dash two one back to staff.
So... So it's in part four. So basically, part four is all about when the chair or the warden calls a meeting in person and somebody wants to participate electronically. So that's,
That's the section.
That's the hybrid section.
Like I said, this is just my own personal opinion on that. I personally don't like the hybrid models, the way that they work at all. I believe there's a time and place for video conferencing meetings, but making a mix and match hybrid is, for me, is my own personal opinion, I have a problem with it. Counselor Hulbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you to the CAO, would, is a motion necessary to include hybrid when four, section four is really part of, does it need to be clearer and more explicit that this is allowing for a hybrid model? Or 4.1 through is just a given that we are entertaining the idea of hybrid model?
That's a great question. I think the way to test that would be if a member of the assembly was willing to make a motion to amend the original motion and that the language would provide me direction on how to treat part four in the amendment. And then we would vote on the amendment and then we would have clarity and then we would vote on the main motion.
So it would be within my right now, just for process, to amend the motion, to provide clarity to section four, to be more explicit in it being eligible for us to have hybrid model meetings?
So I think section four is hybrid. And so what I need to know is, does the assembly want the document to move forward with part four or without part four?
So the motion...
So your amendment could be that the revisions either include part four or delete part four. But if we're, okay, so we're moving it forward, the motion was to move it forward to council to...
No.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, move it, move it, send it back to staff for some revision. So if we leave it as it is, then the hybrid model is in.
Except that the deputy warden raised the point that there's lack of clarity for the CAO on what to revise. And so what I shared was, I think I'm hearing from all of you, that more positive language that talks about this as being a forward-thinking policy, there's consensus on that. There's not consensus on part four. So my default would be to leave it in because I wasn't told to take it out.
Okay, so amend, I guess I'm just trying to figure, like, for clarity, if we leave it in, yeah, hybrid's there, right? So if we're, if we're, so if, if then we're voting on Counselor Durkey's motion to move it back to staff...
Then all I'd be working on is the nuances in the language around positivity.
Okay, so then we, yeah, then we don't need to amend the motion.
Except that there's not clarity on if I go back and do that and it comes back with part four in it, is it going to get sent back again? So...
So can I amend the motion to include language that specifies hybrid model is part of what we do?
I think probably the clearest language would be to make a motion to amend the main motion to retain part four in the revisions.
Yeah, that.
Okay, so are you, are you making that an amendment?
Yes, I will move that that be the amendment to retain part four as is. Yes.
All right, a motion on the floor, amendment on the floor of the main motion to, to...
Retain part four.
Retain part four.
Seconded by the deputy warden, Mr. Chair.
Yes, it was seconded by the deputy warden. I see no microphones lit up and as I said before, and I'll say it again.
Mr. Chair, Counselor Durkey's mic just lit up.
I can speak though, is...
Yeah, but you just said there were no mics lit up.
I, I didn't see it until after I seen her hands going. But I said it before and I said it again, I'm not in favor of any hybrid. So any, any motion to, to retain section four would be a no-go for me. My position has not changed. Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what we're looking at is, in the original motion that was made, there were some pretty stringent rules. And I think what we're looking for is by going back to staff, we're looking for a little bit more flexibility. And that, because the original motion or the original policy wasn't just for council meetings, it was for committee meetings as well. And so I think that's what we're looking at is how can we be more flexible? And, and the question is, right, do we, do we have to specify, you know, oh, only two people allowed to do hi, if we're going to go hybrid, well, only two people are allowed to do it? How, only three people? How many? Like, do we have to, can we be flexible with that? Or do we have to be specific? I just, I had to make sure I said that right because a teacher once used to say Pacific instead of specific. So, yeah, that's my concern, is, is to go back and revise it and, and be flexible, to be positive and make it fair.
Deputy Warden?
I, I'd like to make a suggestion, just, like, I, I, I agree with the flexibility. More flexibility is always good. But the issue with more flexibility is that we're at the very beginning. And what we've done previously is we've run the meetings with everybody on the platform, Zoom or whatever the platform, and it's been, that, that's in some respects easier to do, obviously. But what we're talking about here is we're talking about one or two folks being away and, and obviously don't want more than that. You don't want it too often because it does weigh down staff. We do have, at this point. But I think you can work the way, the, the flexibility word in differently, like, maybe a suggestion, given the motion on the floor, given the, I think the amendment's good, that provides clarity. But the flexibility piece could be that, you know, we're, we're looking at amending the policy, you know, maybe we could put on, on a, on a six-month basis moving forward because the technology may change. We're going to, we're going to experiment with this. If we look at it in six months' time, and we've had a couple things happen, maybe there's a piece of technology that will allow us to, to widen it a little bit, make it a little bit more flexible. Maybe there's a practice that we didn't recognize that makes it a little bit more flexible in certain, we can add to the policy as time goes along. I guess the danger, and I think, I think staff has, has brought a policy to us that's pretty well researched in other jurisdictions, because they've run into, run into problems and difficulty, given the, the state of affairs, given the state of technology, all those types of things. I think we can, if, if the wording flexibility may be a review date every six months for the next couple of years is in there, I think, I think that will allow us to have, to get the policy in place to start working on it. Because this is going to be work in process, right? Progress, rather. I, I think, I think we're better off starting something rather than voting everything down and, and not having any policy in place. Because if there's no policy in place, there's, there's no video conferencing option available at all. So I, I, I think I'd rather see something rather than nothing. And then we can start kind of close, close to the beginning and ultimately look for more capacity and more flexibility moving forward. Because I think certainly it's going there. The electronic voting thing was a no-go at the beginning and we're there. And I think it's, I think everybody agrees it's better. So, so I think, I think, I think it's a really positive move and probably there can be some more, you know, positive, I think that in itself is a positive tip of the hat to moving the thing forward and increasing the flexibility and usage moving forward if we're going to review the policy in six months, let's say. Just a recommendation to go along with that. I think that, that goes a long way to sort of honor what folks are wanting.
All right, is there any more discussion on this? I think we beat this down the road. There's, this is amendment on the main motion. So I'm going to call for the question on the, question being called on the amendment on the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, nay. A vote of five to one, motion carried on the amendment. So now we're going back to the main motion, which, which is to, to recommend to staff the video conferencing policy V dash 1064 dash two one, if you move back to staff, correct? I think that was it. Question being called on the main motion. All those in figure signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, nay. A vote of five to one, motion carried. And please record my name in the minutes. Moving on, I don't, I get, I do have to ask this. I would entertain a motion to go for a 10-minute recess because I really need to do, watch room. Moved by Counselor Nick Hilton, seconded by Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, motion to, for a 10-minute recess. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary?
Catch me, Sharon. Well, I had a storm on Sunday. So in...
Oh, yeah.
Well, I had one a while ago, but then I had another one on Sunday. In the middle of, my mom and I are cleaning the basement and my, my boyfriend and my stepdad were outside trying to get some drainage stuff from the knot. And then he's going, I think we have a storm. I have tights on. Can't you put on a suit? I'm like, no, I can't. It's going to go away.
So what are you doing for winter?
Where we stop taking their honey. So, and he's going to put, I don't know, something around them just to kind of shelter them from the wind.
Yes, like an insulation kind of thing.
Yeah.
But do you reduce their opening?
No. Yeah, I'll be interested. We're up to 21 miles. I, I just can't even believe it.
What do you do with 21 miles?
We keep, we keep sweating them off, right? And you can, but I just haven't had the tights or the...
Yeah, does it need to move around a little bit?
Let's make sure these re-sweat the winter before we start going anymore. So I think the height of that storm on Sunday, I think that that's probably a lost pot. We'll keep it for the winter just in case. But at this point, yeah.
Since we put policies and stuff and committee, the whole, I'm going to say this again, I really don't like it here.
Where are we going to?
We used to have separate meetings.
Yeah, that weren't open to the public and, yeah.
I sometimes wonder why we could change certain things and be open to the public.
Well, because that's the process.
See, Nick, we never, we never did do the, the policies and stuff. And that's what takes time.
Like, reading scheduled times, that would, that was just an argument amongst themselves.
See...
But that's the process.
That's the process, Nick.
We could have did a doodle poll that would have done that. Much better than that.
It's not always about efficiency.
Mike, let me know when you're back up. All right, we're, we're back on, off our 10-minute recess. For bio, bio breaks, we'll move on to item 7.4, decorations for the holiday season. Counselor Nick Hilton had obviously brought that up before. And we have in front of us a report by Mark Blinn. What is the wishes, Madam CAO, do you wish to speak on that?
So at previous committee, the whole meeting, Counselor Hilton asked for this to come forward. I think it's a, it's a piece that we had discussed, I think in late November, December last year, around whether or not it was feasible and what the parameters were. One request had been made to one counselor about the municipality looking after installing plugs on light poles in a particular community for a certain distance in order to string Christmas lights. So since then, we've talked about a lot of things. And one of the things that's in our strategic plan is, is under the strategic direction people, we have a placemaking initiative. So the direction of council is to develop a placemaking policy for use as a reference point, lens and leading practice indicator in community development projects and partnered activities. So the briefing note that had been previously submitted to council, I just linked it to this item that Counselor Hilton wanted to bring back forward because it provided kind of the, the high-level research in terms of how do municipalities support their communities who have grassroots initiatives?
Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, I've seen this on the agenda this week. And I think it's one of the very first discussions I ever had at council. And I'm still very interested in it. But at the same time, I think we, we recently had a conversation around inviting committees in Bloom to join us here for a presentation. And, you know, without that happening, without the placemaking meeting or without us getting together to discuss placemaking, I think this can be held. And, you know, and I put that to any community member that has an interest in doing something like, was recommended in, in Port Maitland, to put up Christmas lights to, you know, to contact us and, and bring ideas forward. It makes it a little bit easier for me to decide what direction this needs to go in. But until we have that placemaking opportunity, I think for me, this can just wait or until we hear from committees in Bloom. All those things are about, you know, uniting our, our communities. And I look forward to those conversations when, when it's brought to council. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just yesterday, had someone come and speak to me about doing something in Port Maitland, about the fog alarm building there and, and what was happening and the lack of taking care of it. Or, and, and how we could go forward with that. And I had recommended that, you know, she put her thoughts in writing and, and send it to all of us. But in terms of just decorations for the holiday season, I know that Mark had been looking into putting things on poles because I had requested the flags that Chamber of Commerce had been putting out. And I know there, I don't know the final answer on that. And Madam CAO, through the chair to you, maybe you do. But I have been through the South Shore and Clare and the Valley and have noticed lots of things on poles in those locations. And so I wondered if there was an update on information and being able to do that. Because I do think, you know, we need to start somewhere. And, and I've been asking this for a couple of years now. And just some, if we can just start with something somewhere, I think that would be a real positive experience for people in, at least in one community. And then, then we go from there. So, Madam CAO, do you have an update on the... So, Madam CAO, do you have an update on the putting things on poles?
I do. So putting things on poles, the dynamics around that are different depending on what the thing is you want to put on a pole.
Yes.
So banners that go on an L bracket, for example. A request gets made to whichever utility owns the pole. So it could be owned by Nova Scotia Power or another utility provider. So you have to identify who owns the pole, then you make a request, and usually they do a safety survey and they say, yep, you can do that, or no, you can't. And then if they say yes, it's really a matter of materials and labor. And so we had been contacted by the Chamber of Commerce that they had banners, buy local banners that were available, and we do have some L brackets on hand from another project. So we got some pricing on installing some in the Hebron-Daten corridor and in the Port Maitland corridor, and I think to install eight banners, we were looking at $3,000, which was unbudgeted. And so I, you know, I had said to Mark, it's not budgeted, and, you know, we just don't have the money to do it this year. It's not on council's priority. There was no motion by council to make it happen, and so it didn't get done. Subsequent to that, I will share with council that the funding that we got from the federal government to do the SWAT analysis in the Hebron Business Park, in that funding allotment there was slippage. And we got a notification from the federal government that if we could match dollars, we could get more dollars and do more work. And so we took a look at the economic development budget, and I said to Mark, you know, this is federal money, this is 50 cent dollars, what can we postpone? And so there were some things in the park that we were able to postpone and leverage those 50, 50 cent dollars. So that put a further pressure on the economic development budget. So it's not that the banners can't happen, but we have to plan for them. And, you know, I do think it would be prudent for council as a whole to make a decision on how many banners and where because if we start putting up banners ad hoc without kind of bringing it to council and knowing where they're gonna go, and all the counselors being ready for it and being able to answer, how was it decided where they went, then that could be problematic for elected officials to answer, too. So that's a long answer to a very simple question.
Okay, and so with that being said, then I'd like to have that discussion to say, you know, can we, can we start somewhere with something so that we can show our communities that this is the direction that we are moving? With, you know, even if we did one district, if it's 3,000, just to put up banners?
It's because of the equipment that's required and the traveling. It's several hundred dollars an hour, and it's several hours of work to get the L brackets put in the first time. After that, I don't, I don't know what the cost would be, you know?
Okay, so, okay. So then I would, I think I'd like to make a motion that we, we direct staff to choose one location where we can start the initiative of putting up some decorations for the holiday season. Or the, the, something, the banners up so that we can, we can get going with it. Because I just feel that we keep, we keep talking about this, but we're not making any movement on it. And would it mean that we'd have to take money from our contingency fund to do that?
Counselor, could you please restate the motion?
No. I know.
Because the motion was to direct staff in the...
Yes, so direct staff to...
To select the location.
To select a location, to install brackets and banners for the upcoming holiday season. And if we need a separate motion, I could do that in terms of where the money's coming from.
No, okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Nick Hilton. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Counselor Durkey, and Counselor Hilton for your, for your input. The question is, why does it cost $3,000? Well, number one, you need a lift. You need some type of a lift truck, and they're expensive. So I can see, I can see the reality of the cost for that. Number two, correct me if I'm wrong, that my understanding of doing something like that should be community-driven, whether it's a church or a hall or some type of organization saying, "We like to do this, and can the municipality help us do this?" With some type of funding and whatnot. I, and I'm all for having, doing some decorations on poles and whatnot through the different types of seasons, and I think that, you know, the banners they have downtown are wonderful to have and whatnot. But I think we need to discuss this on, and I don't think we should leave it to staff to say, "Oh, we'll put it in this part of the municipality, but not that part." So I think we gotta have some good discussion about this type of stuff. And I also think that we have to plan, unfortunately, I don't think it can be done this year, in my opinion. I think we gotta plan for it and make sure we budget for something and see what community groups come forward and say, "We'd like to submit a grant so we can do this with a," you know, and then we partner with them somehow and whatnot, right? So that's, that's my opinion. I think it's a great idea, don't get me wrong there, but I don't think it's feasible for us to do it this year. We've already set our budget. We had a contingency fund in our budget. We use a lot of that. We only got a little bit of money left, and, you know, that's, that's my thought. I think we gotta be very frugal with our monies that we're gonna be spending, and let's make sure we prepare a proper, a proper application for, for communities to, to request such a, such an event. Thank you.
Counselor Sheri Hurler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of points. I think that, I know that, I think my first council meeting, we were actually, we talked about this, and my fear then is exactly what's happening now. Here we are in September, we're still talking about it. We didn't budget money. Should we have? Probably, guess we should have. So my fear is that we're in the same place we were last year and no progress has been made. So I, I support the idea in principle. I would, however, tend to agree with Counselor Cushing on, do we, do we ask staff to pick a place? I think that Modi, I have a couple of things, some random thoughts popping through my head. Modi versus, you know, resident-driven, I think that there are things that we as a municipality can do to beautify our community and to pay tribute to things, and maybe, you know, it's not Christmas, maybe it's, like for me, Remembrance Day rings strong and true for me, and, you know, and then it also goes back to place-making. If we're asking, if we have to have a discussion and a working session on how we are going to make place-making work in the municipality, it all goes hand in hand. But I don't want our holiday season to go by because we spent a year doing nothing and now we say we don't have time. So in theory, I support it, but I think it also goes hand in hand with place-making and to Counselor Cushing's, you know, comment, do we allow staff to pick the place, or do we just decide, you know, put everyone's community in a hat and draw out a name? I guess I have all kinds of thoughts and, you know, and I don't want this to go on for another hour, like, you know, some, you know, some things do. But for me, it's, we were in the exact same place we were last year this time, and nothing happened. So something needs to happen, in my opinion.
Deputy Warden.
Right, I, I, like Sheri, like Counselor Hurler has indicated, in principle, I think, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good thing to have to decorate for Christmas and that type of thing. I think we are fundamentally different than the town. The town's kind of got that downtown core that is kind of the old Stars Road, or, you know, those places are kind of obvious places to decorate. I mean, the municipality, we do have, it's much more spread out. We've got the commercial stretch in Arcadia, we've got the Milo Stretch, we've got Port Maitland, we've got Carlton. You know, you make, you've got a little bit of commercial stretch there in South Ohio. So I think by, I can't vote in favor of the motion simply because it's not, you know, it's not prescriptive enough. Staff hasn't had time to, you know, give our thoughts, other than some costs, I mean, I don't even know what we're putting up on the brackets, right? Is it a, is it a Remembrance Day thing? Is it a buy local? Is it a Christmas decoration? I have no idea, and Christmas decorations are not cheap. We're not gonna do that for three grand. We might get the brackets up, but I don't know where they're gonna be and so on. Anyway, maybe this, this is a recurrent theme, obviously. We want to do something. And I don't, I don't have any disagreement certainly with it, but at the end of the day, council hasn't chosen the budget for it, and we don't have any firm budget figures. So I don't notice what it is we'd be asking our CAO to undertake based on the motion. It's not clear at all, and therefore I can't vote in favor of the motion. I guess the only suggestion I can make, and it's a disappointing suggestion, I know for some certainly, is that we may want to look at this and do a test case and understand, but there's a communication piece to go to this, too, right? So when they show up in Hebron and not Port Maitland, or Port Maitland and not Hebron, and not Arcadia Stretch, somebody's gonna notice that. And we better have an answer. What's, it's the, so I, I, I can't vote in favor of it, sorry.
Madam CAO.
So I think I would like to interject a thought I was gonna save till the end till after the questions called, but I think it's important to say this right now. So we had all of these conversations last fall and last winter, and then you agreed that you were going to create a policy to guide this work before we did any projects for all of the reasons that you've all just talked about now. So I have direction to develop a policy that would guide these initiatives. We have a little bit of high-level research, and there's more work to do. So I want to encourage you that it's on your agenda today because I was told to put it on your agenda today. Apparently, there has been some movement on the part of Counselor Hilton, who requested it, that, you know, wants to see the policy work done, wants to hear from communities in Bloom. You know, I guess my feeling is, don't be so hard on yourselves just because we're bringing this forward again and we're talking about it again. I think you have approached it from a really good governance perspective. You've given really clear direction to me. And so, you know, I just want to put that out there and kind of remind everybody about the process we've been through and the conversations we've had.
Counselor Durkey.
I just would like to remind everybody that, that I have been bringing this forward due to a request from the pastor at the Wesleyan Church. So it was a community group that actually came forward to initiate this, and maybe it's been two years now. So that's why I have to keep bringing it back forward because I'm sure they would like to see something happen. And that's why I have brought this motion forward because we've, we just keep talking about it and we're not, and not getting anywhere. And I understand, you know, now that we have a new strategic plan, that it's part, in part is included, or we need the policy in order to drive it. So if you were to say, which area should be included, it should be included in Port Maitland because that's the community group that started the initiative. And should we pilot something? Yeah, we should pilot something, and so that's how people would know, and that's where it got started. Anyway, just my, just, I just need to air my frustration because this isn't new, and I just feel we're spinning wheels and, you know, so if it was $1,500 as opposed to $3,000 because we only did one community, that to me is a very small budget to make a lot of people happy. And we're looking at a population of 500 to 700 people, and that's where it came from, the community.
All right, is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? If not, then entertain a question. Question being called on the motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Vote of three to three, motion is defeated. All right, moving on. Item number eight, new business. Just a reminder to council, we already made a motion to extend the, extend the meeting by one hour, so we're going into our final hour. This is going into our, past our fourth hour, so just a reminder. Item 8.1, November Committee of the Whole Meeting Date. You may or may not, I don't know if that's in your package, but many of you probably already know that November the 11th now falls on a Committee of the Whole date, which would be Thursday. So we are looking to either move that meeting date and/or postpone it. So what is the wishes of council in that regard? Committee of the Whole is now being held on Thursday afternoons. November the 11th is on a Thursday, which is the second Thursday of the month. So what is the wishes of council? Do you wish to move that date ahead, back, not hold it at all, postpone? Sorry. Counselor Sheri Hurler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure if we need to make a motion.
Yes, you do.
We do.
You have to make a recommendation to regular council, too.
Oh, okay. Oh, gosh. I would make a recommendation to council to move Committee of the Whole to the day before November the 10th, same time, 2:30 start time.
All right, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by the deputy warden. So a motion on the floor to move the Committee of the Whole meeting in November to November the 10th at 2:30. Is there any discussion on that motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried unanimously. Your counsel. Item 8.2, Amendments to the Heritage Incentive Rebate Program Policy H dash 048 dash 21. Madam CAO.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a little context. So the heritage coordinator and myself have had a chance to put your policy through its first test. We had our first application come through, and like all good policies, they're living documents, and when we see refinements that are required, we bring them to you for your consideration. And so, underlined in your package under Part 5, we're recommending improvements to the claims process, so that's before you for your consideration.
So what is the wishes of council? Deputy, I'm sorry, Counselor Sheri Hurler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would recommend that we move this to regular council for approval as amended, or as revised? Revised, yes.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. A motion on the floor. Any discussion on that motion? Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried unanimously. Item 8.3, Motion from the Accessory Advisory Committee. You all have that in your package?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll get started, but the chair of the committee is also at the table, Counselor Hurler, so if there's any blanks that I leave, I'll ask her to jump in and fill them in. So as you know, this council has been working diligently to fulfill its obligations under the Accessibility Act to fully populate an accessibility advisory committee for council. We had originally approved a terms of reference that called for five citizen reps. We had trouble with the recruitment, so, and because a legal meeting of the Accessibility Advisory Committee must have half of its members be individuals who identify with a physical, with a barrier of some sort, we backed it off to two. We're struggling now with quorum issues. So the recommendation before you by way of motion from the committee is that we amend the terms of reference in, I guess the sections aren't numbered, under Membership Part A to read "up to" for additional community members.
Counselor Sheri Hurler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam CAO, for the clarity on that. As the chair of the committee, we've been doing great work, but there have been some issues with quorum and quorum, I think Robert's Rules of Order say that half can be two, so if we have four people there, but if the two people there are counselors, we felt that we didn't really want to move forward with any, any motions or moving things forward to council. So I would like to make a motion that we move to council for approval that the accessibility, to revise the accessibility policy to state that the accessibility...
That is put on there by me. As you all know, we've had a new government elected, and we have a new premier, and I believe it's 18 on the executive council. Also, something to note would be our M L A Zach Churchill, who was just, I just recently heard that he was elected as deputy leader of the opposition. So I think a letter from our council to the new premier and ministers, and also our M L A is in order. So I would entertain a motion from any counselor to move that forward to regular council.
Moved by Counselor Patty Durkey.
Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded. Motion carried unanimously. All right, item 8.5, Near Miss at John's Cove Beach. Counselor Lauren Cushing, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm sure everyone around the council table knows of the incident that happened at John's Cove Beach, and it was a near tragedy. So I just want to read a statement that I had prepared to address this situation. The near tragedy on August 15th, 2021, at John's Cove Beach has shown that this well-used beach is in definite need of some kind of adequate service and maintenance. Having previously identified some of the specific needs, parking, traffic flow, washrooms, and change room facilities, as well as accessibility for all to the beach, the need for a lifeguard has now gone to the top of this list. I would like to explore the possibility of a letter of concern be sent to the province by our staff requesting clarification of who is ultimately responsible for the beach, and what can and cannot be done. Do we need a motion on that, or just a ask staff?
It would be a motion to recommend to regular council.
It'd be, pardon me?
A motion to recommend to regular council is what it would be.
I would make a motion that we move the request to council for approval, to have a letter sent. Correct?
Madam C A O?
So the content of the letter would be per your comments, Counselor Cushing?
Yes.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by the deputy warden. Any discussion? Deputy Warden, you have the floor.
Yeah, and also, in preparation for that, perhaps our C A O could look into some of the details around the acquisition of a lifeguarding station. I know this year that down in Shelburne County on the Stony Island beach, for the first time, they did have lifeguards down there. They were parking area they've done. It's not a particularly warm or swimmable beach, but it is frequented by people. And I know that, and again, that's a very busy beach. I would agree with Lauren. And, you know, there's a lot of tide and all that type of thing. So I think if we could have our C A O look into the details of what went on Stony Island, Cape Sable Island this year in terms of how they got the lifeguards there, I think we should do some due diligence around that and prep for the meeting and potential writing of the letter at a regularly scheduled council meeting. So I think that's an important thing, and it's very busy down there. I mean, there's a lot of people at the beach, so.
Thank you.
I think that would increase confidence and maybe usership too, if there was a lifeguard there.
I do agree, Counselor, Deputy Warden, with every comment you made, but I guess we have a motion on the floor, but it does not specifically mention any background information. So I guess the best course of action would be after this motion that's sitting on the floor is voted on, that you keep that in the back of your mind, and we make a motion in that regard? Because this specific motion doesn't talk exactly to that.
I think that was just a general comment.
Okay.
I don't think that the C A O needs instruction on this.
Well, I seen her writing it down, and I was a little unsure because I didn't want to add anything if that's going to get added in, that what didn't really directly pertain to the motion, so. Is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Not entertain a question.
Question called.
Question being called.
Wait a minute, Patty.
I think you can see it higher.
I'm telling you, first it was being able to see Counselor Nick Hilton's microphone flashing, and now your microphone is really hard to see too. You have the floor, Counselor Durkey. My apologies.
Thank you, Counselor Cushing, for bringing this forward. And kudos to Dave and Nancy Bishara for acting quickly to save the individuals. This is a big-picture item, and John's Cove always has been one of our busiest beaches. And so, providing lifeguard service there is more than, is just the start. Because I think once we do that, we're gonna, if we consider doing it, and I don't know who would be paying for it, or, and I appreciate that Deputy Warden has mentioned another beach that now has service because providing a lifeguard there would increase the number of people that go there, which again, increases the parking issue, increases the lack of facilities there, and who takes responsibility for all of that. So I think it's really important that our staff do research to find out what happens. Does it get designated as, do we go forward and ask the province to make it a park? Or do we have to take that responsibility to designate it as a municipal park? So it's more of a big picture than just the one little component, which I think we need to certainly learn more about the direction we would need to go to make that all work.
Counselor Cushing?
Well, thank you, Counselor Durkey, and I agree totally. And lifeguards are expensive, number one. They are a necessity there, number two. And the letter that I like to, that we will be sending to the province is to get clarification of who owns the beach. Once we find that out for sure, then we can say, okay, this department, this level of government, the next level of government, you're responsible. How are you going to help us out? All right? So I think that's, I think that's a road we're going to go down. And I've been concerned about this John's Cove Beach since I first was elected back in 216, and the problems haven't been resolved. We were close to having it resolved at one time, but anyway, we'll leave that one alone. But it's, it is a big issue, and we'll continue on, so. Thank you.
Madam C A O?
So council, in discussing John's Cove Beach through the years, has often talked about the traffic congestion, some of the solid waste issues that we face there. Those are the two primary issues. And the traffic congestion is not, the issue there, just for anybody listening or watching, is not, you know, we don't want people parking by the beach. The issue is, is that the road infrastructure is not designed for people to be parking on the shoulders of the road. There's not enough room for emergency vehicles to respond to emergencies in certain locations. And so this council has brought it to the attention of the province on several occasions that whether or not the province designates it a park and puts it under their park schematic, and whether or not transportation and infrastructure renewal, which is now Public Works, can or cannot provide some parking, we've highlighted safety concerns. And when Counselor Cushing shared with me the near miss with the, not just the drowning of one little boy, it could have been a family of three, you know, my feeling at the time was, what a great opportunity for us to follow up on all those conversations and say, we understand your constraints. We understand, you know, you've got a lot of people explaining to you where there could be good locations for provincial infrastructure. But at the end of the day, Her Majesty owns that land, and we've now got a near drowning miss there, and it's a great opportunity for us to write to the province and say, look, we need you to reevaluate John's Cove Beach in terms of formalizing its use by the community. And I know in Barrington that it was a collaboration between the municipality and the province that put that in place, and absolutely be happy to talk to the C A O to find out all the ins and notes around that. But again, it's all around, how do we reduce exposure for the municipality of Yarmouth and still try and provide the services and provide safe ways for people to be using the facility? So what I've just said isn't exactly what the motion calls for, so I'm not sure if the members want to discuss whether or not the letter is to ask the question on who owns the land and who's responsible, or if the letter is to continue reiterating concerns that we have brought forward many times.
From my understanding, the context of the motion on the floor was to reiterate all the concerns that we've been speaking to the province about over the years. That was my understanding of the motion. Counselor Cushing?
Yes, we have been talking over the years, but I'm just feared because I've been around the coast enough and dealt with different levels of government, uncoastal issues, and I'm just afraid, I just want some clarification also of who owns that section, that beach, you know? I've got an idea who does, but I'm not going to say it because I don't want to be, I don't want to be quoted as saying wrong. So the first place to do is ask the province of whose beach is it? And go from there. And include what our C A O was discussing too, about the number of times that we've been, we've been brought this to the attention of T I R and whatnot, so.
Could I just ask a question for clarification, Counselor Cushing, through the chair to you? When you say whose beach is it, are you talking about whose responsibility, the province or the federal government? Is that what you mean?
That's correct.
Ah, okay.
All right, is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Deputy Warden?
I'll move that the C A O provide also a briefing note about, not only about the issue of who owns the property, but any other salient points that she can ascertain, you know, over the next few weeks, that may be useful to move this forward or have us come to some decision. So I'll use that. I don't notice what those would be, but certainly the fact that, you know, there's a lifeguard station at, on Cape Sable Island, at Stony Island, that's a very different set of circumstances, that it did in road, and there's plenty of parking. So again, a briefing note on all of those pieces so we can have a more fulsome conversation about it, and ultimately, we may end up writing more than the one letter.
Deputy Warden, I'm a little confused on the motion that you're putting on the floor, so could you please repeat it again?
Yeah, I'm moving that the C A O provide a briefing note, and the contents would be at her discretion, and it would be to better inform council about the issues around the John's Cove Beach and perhaps some recommendations for further action. That could include letter writing, all those types of things, at her discretion, for additional information and so that we could have a more fulsome discussion about a move forward.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Cushing? Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was again.
So any discussion on the motion on the floor? Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded. Motion carried. All right, moving. Counselor Cushing?
Continuing on with that, with the John's Cove Beach. I would also like to make a motion that we move this to council, that we issue a certificate of appreciation to Dave Bishara, recognizing his heroic efforts on August 15th, 2021, in saving the lives of a mother and a child at John's Cove Beach.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Cushing?
Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. I was again.
So any discussion on the motion on the floor? Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded. Motion carried. All right, moving. Counselor Cushing?
Continuing on with that, with the John's Cove Beach. I would also like to make a motion that we move this to council, that we issue a certificate of appreciation to Dave Bishara, recognizing his heroic efforts on August 15th, 2021, in saving the lives of a mother and a child at John's Cove Beach.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by the deputy warden. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded. Motion carried unanimously. All right, moving on to item number nine, correspondence for action. Item 9.1.1, Southwest Nova Scotia Regional Discussion on Housing. You all have that in your package. On August 25th, 2021, we received a letter from the municipality, sorry, the town of Digby in regards to housing. As we all know, it's been in the last provincial election, it's also been in the current federal election campaign. This is a request, I do believe, and Madam C A O, please correct me if I'm wrong, for us to have quarterly meetings with the wardens and C A Os in this regard to try to help with the housing issue. Madam C A O, is that correct?
So this letter doesn't discuss quarterly meetings. Another municipality did make a motion to take Mayor Cleveland up on the offer and further that they be quarterly meetings. So, but this particular request is basically gauging this council's interest in being part of the conversation with the other 10 municipalities in Shelburne, Yarmouth, and Digby counties.
Yes, that's correct. I stood corrected.
Well, on a quarterly basis is suggested there.
Yeah, it's been in the news quite a bit, and I would certainly entertain a motion in that regard. Counselor Sherry Hurlberg, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion that we ask staff to make contact with our municipal partners, our neighboring municipal partners, to discuss how we can move this forward. I know this says quarterly, but for me, sorry, I'll make that motion, then we'll have a discussion, yes. I forget the rules of order.
Just don't turn off your mic. Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Durkey. Okay, you still have the floor, Counselor Hurlberg, so you may continue to speak.
Thanks. I think, you know, this letter talks about quarterly basis, but I think now more than ever, we need to be moving this forward sooner rather than later. And I know that, you know, it is, you know, it is timely, but also understanding that it would take some time for all of our municipal, neighboring municipal partners to get together and, you know, agree on, you know, how this is going to roll out. We do know, we recognize that housing is a provincial responsibility, but I think whatever we can do to advocate, find ways that we can be creative to help, you know, with the affordable housing crisis. My other comment would be, it doesn't state who would be representing, so I think, you know, in a future meeting, we, I would like to see a discussion on who from the municipality. I don't know if it always has to be, you know, the warden and the C A O, or like the other committees that we have, we, you know, elect representatives to, you know, to elect people to represent us on, you know, on the partnerships that we have with our neighboring municipalities. Thank you.
Yes, you're absolutely correct on that because this letter actually states that to form a Southwest Nova Scotia Municipality Municipalities Discussion Group on Affordable Housing. I'm not exactly sure how that's going to get set up, and who decides how it's going to get set up. Counselor Durkey?
Oh, I 100% support this. I think it's high priority at the moment, and if there's a way that we can help the province solve this issue, then it's most important for everyone. And I believe we all have similar issues in all of our municipalities, and so if we can work together to come together to solve this common problem... And so if we can work together to come together to solve this common problem, then it's well worth our time. So I will be agreeing with this motion.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried unanimously. Item 9.1.2, grant application to Yarmouth Community Farmers' Market. You all have that in your package. This is a grant from the Farmers' Market. And as you all know, this is normally outside of our normal grant applications, but it does refer to piggybacking this on, since I pull it up, on an application to a COA.
Yep. So, Mr. Chair, the application that has come in, there's a covering email that goes with it, and they are asking for a conditional consideration. So if the Farmers' Market application to a COA is positive, then we would agree to be a partner. So a couple of things that might help you help the group, because it's, you know, Farmers' Markets are an important part of our economic drivers, is around timing. Time is your friend. It's on your side this time. Our contingency for grants is getting depleted. We have $2,250 left there. But because of the federal election, we know that a COA decisions are not going to be made now until after the election, after cabinet is chosen. So it's several months before that. In addition to that, the construction season is waning. And finally, the Farmers' Market is in the process of renegotiating their next lease, which would deal with leasehold improvements and who pays what, because the Farmers' Market doesn't own this building. It's owned by a private company. So an option that I'm going to put on the table for your consideration is, is that if you're favorable to the application, that you consider a conditional award out of next year's grants, and that all of the other parameters of the policy would apply.
So what is the wishes of council? Counselor Patty Durkey?
I would like to make a motion that we support the Farmers' Market and their request. And again, the budget goes towards next year, and that we support the ask for a letter of intent. I'm talking in circles at the moment.
So you're making a motion to?
That we support.
Support the request coming out of next year's grant?
Yes.
Because I think that makes it just about as clear as it could be.
The only other question is the amount.
It's $4,300. And I just want to say that I think the Farmers' Market is extremely important to our region, and that most of the vendors are from the municipality of the District of Yarmouth, I'm guessing, or the municipality of the District of Argyle. So I think this is just a very important initiative for our region, and I'm happy to support that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the request of $4,300 coming out of the next year's grant funds. Is there a second there on that motion? Seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Is there any discussion on that? Counselor Nick Hilton, you're the first one.
Thank you. So she also talked about sending the letter of intent. Do we need to include that in this motion or make a separate motion?
I think I heard Counselor Durkey mention it. So that could go anytime. That could go anytime.
Yeah, the motion will include that. Yeah, so I've been, I've talked, I've visited the Yarmouth Farmers' Market recently, and 19 of the 25 vendors there live in the municipality and district of Yarmouth, along with, I think, the owners of the building actually live in the municipality and district of Yarmouth. So I'm in favor of it. I also had the opportunity to visit the Annapolis County Farmers' Market last weekend. And just the number of vendors, you know, local families that are new to Nova Scotia that have provided products there was amazing, just another form of inclusion for people new to our community. So it was a great experience. And the one here, I think the improvements to the building that are being made will make room for multiple new vendors to attend and to be a year-round thing. So I am in favor of the $4,300 investment. I think, is it on the condition that they get the ACOA grant? Is that, that would be in the wording?
That's how they framed their application. Yep.
Perfect. So thank you very much. And thank you, Patty, for making that motion.
You're welcome.
Counselor Durkey, you have your mic still. Counselor Hurliburton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would support the intent based on their grant application and the approval from, the funding from ACOA. However, my concern, my only concern is if every other grant application we have received and went through before we approved our budget, we had every organization ask us for a specific amount, and I'm not sure the statistics of how many people we granted the exact amount that they asked for. So my concern would be that we're saying now for next year's budget that we're going to award $4,300 no matter what, we get in from anybody else, when we normally for our grant or in the past, our grant application, we take them all and evaluate them case by case and then award the money. In principle, I like the idea, but committing to the 43 not knowing what, 4,300 not knowing what we're going to get for applications in the spring would be concerning to me.
Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in response to Counselor Hurliburton's remarks, I completely agree. Sometimes the grant process is a little objective, not so subjective. And I have issues with that as well. The only thing about this one that I liked is that this was a one-time ask, and it was to leverage 75% more funding. So I still am in favor of it, but I agree that there's some issues with how we allocate funds during that grant process. I did have a question to the C A O, and I'm not sure if it's the right time or not. I know where we allocated $3,000 of that remaining $7,000, but where did the remainder?
Seventeen, so $3,500 went to the Tri-County Women's Center, and 1,750 went to our community litter cleanup.
Good enough. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I was just going to say that we do do our due diligence, and we do look at those grants submissions one at a time. And I guess the overarching reason for approving this one in the full amount is they've got a job to do that's like, I think it was in excess of $50,000. And the only way they can get that done is to have guarantees of all of their community partners, including ourselves, to give a certain amount. So that's why the full $3,600. And that seems reasonable to me. So I'll be voting in...
Forty-three hundred.
What did I say?
He said thirty-six.
Oh, forty-three. Yeah. I'll be voting for the motion. The correct numbers in the motion.
Okay, I see no other microphones, but I do have a question to the C A O. Do you know if there's any other applications to other municipal units?
Yes.
Because that information is not clear. We did see the project there in that regard. So I'm going to ask a few questions here.
Yeah, in some of the supporting material that are excerpts from the ACOA application, we do understand that an application has gone forward to the town of Yarmouth as well.
Okay. My biggest concern here is the Farmers' Market currently doesn't own, does not own the building. So wouldn't they not go to the owners of the building to see if they could help them out as well? Because this has to do with accessibility and some other stuff.
So it's my understanding that the lease is being negotiated and how leasehold improvements are dealt with are part of that negotiation. I mean, it's within council's purview. If they wanted, you know, to further clarify the motion, that it's contingent not just on ACOA, but also on the landlord supporting it in some way, then that's within council's purview. I mean, it is unusual for council to make a capital award.
That's my exact.
On a building that's not owned by the applicant. In fact, I think I can think of one instance where you refused a grant application because the applicant didn't own the building.
That's my exact point that I was going to make right there. Don't get me wrong. I absolutely think this is a worthwhile thing. But my biggest concern would be that we're making a, we're giving a grant to an organization to a building that they don't own. So basically, we're improving someone else's business. That really concerns me in for that simple fact alone. I could not support this. But I would personally, if it was contingent on the negotiations with the owner of the building, that they would also put money towards that. I would be, that would be a little bit better for me to stomach, to tell you the truth. Because you had mentioned, Madam C A O, that we had turned down an application for that fat before, in a previous ask. So that's my concern. I know some may or may not think that that's an issue, but I think personally, that's a humongous issue. Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I don't disagree with that thought process as well. So I guess, can, I know that the negotiation, the lease negotiation is for 10 years. I have no issue investing $4,300 if it's over the next 10 years to support the Farmers' Market. So can we, to support some concerns, somehow amend that motion to be contingent on the success of the 10-year lease or long-term lease?
I don't think that's exactly what the warden was saying, Counselor Hilton. I think what he's asking for is an amendment to the motion to say it's contingent on ACOA funding and funding from the landlord.
Funding from the landlord.
For this specific project.
So I know, the landlord, I do agree, needs to support them, but the amount of rent that they pay is pennies in the run of a month. So in some ways, that landlord is supporting the Farmers' Market on a monthly basis. I think it's, well, I won't say it on camera, but I know that it's very reasonable to support the Farmers' Market. It would require them to up the rent, I think. So I'm not sure how to soothe those concerns, but I do feel like it's a reasonable partnership amongst all of us.
I hate to throw a monkey wrench in that, but that's my thoughts. Counselor Lauren Cushing?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I certainly agree with the opportunity to help out the Farmers' Market. However, and I think our warden and the C A O had alluded to it, but you know, it depends on if ACOA is going to come through, and if the owner is going to be participating in any of the, any of the, any funds that are needed. So as for what they're paying for rent, that's not really our concern. Our concern is if the property owner is willing to participate in any work that the Farmers' Market wants to do. So there's a lot of steps sitting there that if somebody doesn't come through, then we're not, you know, we won't be supporting it, certainly, right? Because we get to have all partners on board to make this happen, including the owner and ACOA. Is that my understanding?
No, not the way, from my understanding, not the way the word, the motion's worded now, because that would be provided that they were successful in their application to ACOA. That's it. In other...
So if there was a contingency around participation by the landlord, would the council be willing to consider in-kind contributions as part of that landlord's participation, rather than noncash? I don't know. I'm just trying to help you figure out a way to solve the problem that the warden raised.
Deputy Warden?
I think we're digging into a problem. I don't think so. Listen, we've got a grant application, we've got a grant application before us. ACOA is going to do their due diligence. They're saying, they're going to decide whether or not they give, and they've got parameters, whether somebody owns the building or not. I think it's an accessibility grant, correct? Am I correct?
Not necessarily framed that way.
But anyway, I think by putting this extra rider on, we're going to run into trouble, and they're going to say, no, the landlords, there's no indication that the landlords participate in this. So philosophically, whether we agree with that or not, that's immaterial. I think the grant applications come to us is, it is, there's been a motion made. We either accept the fact that we're going to support them or not. It's not to put another rider on because that may blow the deal up. I don't know. But in any event, we've got a motion on the floor. I'm not willing to entertain, I mean, somebody can make the motion, it can be seconded. That whole bit about the owner having to participate, that's not what we've been sent. I'm confident that ACOA will do their due diligence. It's obviously a grant that allows for that. So I'd be supportive of that for those reasons.
Counselor Durkey?
Yes, I suspect, and we shouldn't assume anything, but ACOA will not, probably not give money unless there's a 10-year lease that's been signed. I mean, we don't know that for sure, but I mean, I would think that they would do diligence and ensure that situation before they awarded money, because the last thing they would want to do is award money, and then the tenant have to move out. In addition to that, there are situations where nonprofit organizations are leasing buildings from people or organizations, and they do go ahead with capital improvements and have to pay for those, and the organization has not put any money in. And I know of a situation where the municipality was involved in that, where the municipality owned the building, and the renters put in capital improvements. So it does happen.
Any more discussion on the motion on the floor?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Nay. Motion carried, a vote of four to two. Counselor, do you wish to have your name recorded? No? All right, item 9.1.3, Frontline Solutions.
So, Mr. Chair, the F C M had sent out on their email listserv, a request, a call to action for municipalities around the advocacy work they're doing during the federal election to do with the recovery from the pandemic, and they're calling it frontline solutions. So in the package, there's information and a lot of detail about what that means. And the ask is, is for us to participate in the advocacy, and they've specified how they would like us to do that.
So what's wishes of council? I know it's been a long day, but need some direction here. Do you wish to table this to the next meeting at a minimum, or?
So the election will be over.
Yeah, the election will be over. That's the whole thing about that. Deputy Warden? Sorry, no, it's Counselor Sherry Hurliburton was up. I just happened to see his mic first. Go ahead, Counselor Hurliburton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Probably Deputy Warden's motion is going to be more eloquent than mine, but I would make a motion that we move forward in supporting the ask from F C M regarding the municipal election and the frontline solutions recovery fund. Does that cover it?
Yep. A motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by the deputy warden. Any discussion?
Question.
Question?
Oh, sorry.
I would just like to say, I really like the idea of doubling the gas tax piece. So that would be a big win, because we do rely on the gas tax for a lot of municipal infrastructure. And with all of our infrastructure, certainly projects that we've got in the chute, we need the funds more now than ever. So looking forward to doing all those things. And that would go a long way to help. So I think it's a, I think it's a good slate of ass. So I'll be supporting the motion, obviously.
I'm certainly going to be supportive of that. That's a lot of money, a lot of money that we would have access to. Mind you, it would be limited on what we could possibly spend it on, but there's a lot of infrastructure things that it would be eligible for. Absolutely. There's a lot that we'd like to get done. There's a lot on our agenda, our strategic planning, our priorities. There's a lot of things that we could use that for. So any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried unanimously. There's no items for information. All right, now I'd entertain a motion to go into camera. Moved by Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Moved by Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Motion to go into camera. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary?